Good evening. The city of Campbell is no longer requiring face covering to be worn inside city facilities. However, all are welcome to wear a face covering should that make you feel more comfortable. Should health directives from the county of Santa Clara or the Centers for Disease Control change, the city will comply. So I will call to order this regular meeting of the City of Campbell City Council for Tuesday, October 4th, 2022. This regular city council meeting is conducted in person and via telecommunication and is complying with provisions of the Brown Act. The city council meeting is live streamed on channels 26 and 88, the city's website and on YouTube. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gibbons.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi, here.
Councilwoman Landry.
Present.
Vice Mayor Bybee.
Present.
Mayor Resnikov.
Here. Thank you very much for everyone who joined me in the pledge. Thank you all. We have no special presentations or proclamations. We have no communications or petitions. Madam Clerk, we do have an oral request, I think, and that is, is there anybody in the chamber that wants to speak first? Let's check that. Seeing none. So you said we have somebody online. I'm looking for that now. That is, is Bykowski. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Please go ahead. You have two minutes.
Okay, I'm speaking today on behalf of the California Department of Insurance. And I want to share two programs that I think would benefit the city of Campbell and its residents. The first is the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program. It was established by the legislature in 1999 as a state-sponsored program that requires insurance companies to offer affordable liability law auto insurance to drivers that meet certain requirements. To be eligible for this program, drivers must have a valid driver's license or an AB 60 license, own a vehicle valued at $25,000 or less, meet income eligibility guidelines, be at least 16 years of age, and have a good driving record. The annual premiums in California vary by county, but in Santa Clara County, you can get insurance for as low as $317 per year. It's easy to see if you qualify. You just go to mylowcostauto.com. It has FAQs in 11 different languages and you answer seven questions and you'll know if you'll qualify. The second problem I wanted to share is our Senior Gateway Portal. It's a one-stop shop for seniors and their caregivers. It's a partnership between many state agencies and it's sponsored by the Elder Financial Abuse Interagency Roundtable. You'll find information on topics such as avoiding and reporting abuse and neglect, prevent and fraud, healthcare information and others. That website is seniors insurance.ca.gov. And we also give senior scammers stopper seminars if your town is interested in that. And I just wanted to leave you today with our toll-free number. That number is 800-927-4357. Experts, answer your call. You can leave a message and we have a two-minute callback average. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for calling in. Thank you. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody else that wants to speak in open request or oral requests?
We do not.
Okay, in that case, we'll move to council announcements, mayor announcements. City Hall is open to the public for in-person services Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. For your convenience, online services including permits, business license applications and virtual appointments are available online. Visit the city's website at campbellca.gov to view information for all city departments and services available. The city clerk's office is accepting applications for boards and commissions. To find out more about available positions or to apply, please contact the city clerk's office at 408-866-2117 or visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. City of Campbell will be hosting its annual community garage sale on Saturday, October 8th from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Don't miss out on the fun. Join others as they look for amazing offers and treasures. For locations and a listing by category of items for sale, visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. History Happy Hour presents Cold Wrath, the 1896 Rampage of James C. Dunham. Author and historian Barney Terrell will discuss his book about the 1896 McGlinsey murders that took place in Campbell. The event is on Saturday, October 8th from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. To purchase tickets, visit campbellmuseums.com. That's campbellmuseums plural dot com. Oktoberfest returns to Campbell on October 15th and 16th. There's still time to participate also in the 15th Annual Oktoberfest 5K and 10K Fun Run. The run will take place on Saturday, October 15th at 9:00 a.m. at Campbell Park. Cost is $45 for adults, $25 for youth. And for more information, please visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. And lastly, live music is back at Ainsley House through the Fall Garden Concert Series featuring talented musicians. Tony Lindsey will perform on October 23rd, Brian Ho on November 13th. Registration is required and for more additional, or for additional information, please visit campbellmuseums.com. Okay, so we're going to move to consent calendar. This is where we take items as one unless somebody wants to pull an item or remove an item from the calendar. Is there anybody in the public or staff or council that would like to pull an item? City manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to recommend that we remove item five from the consent counter and that will be considered through an administrative process.
Okay, we'll remove item five. Anybody else wishing to remove another item? Seeing none, can we get a motion for items one through four and six through seven?
I so move consent calendar items one through four and six and seven.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Gibbons, second by councilwoman Landry. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
I just want to confirm this is including the desk items.
We have desk, we have two, is it one that?
It's two desk items for four and six.
Thank you for that clarification.
We do, and they're on my notes here, so I apologize. It's my fault and not yours, for the record.
Thank you.
We all knew.
There's a, there's a first time for everything.
There is. I modify my motion to include the desk items for items, what, four and six?
Okay.
Motion is second now. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gibbons.
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilwoman Landry.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Bybee.
Hi.
Mayor Resnikov.
Hi. Thank you very much. We move to public hearings and introductions of ordinances, item eight. Resolution approving use of the supplemental law enforcement service funds and related budget adjustments appropriating the remaining supplemental law enforcement service funds balance for police equipment for fiscal year 2022, 2023. And our presenter is Captain Livingston.
Welcome. In July 1996, California approved AB 3229, citizens' option for public safety, which is referred to as COPS. And in July 2000, AB 2885 extended this program indefinitely. This bill appropriated 100 million from the State General Fund for distribution to local law enforcement agencies for frontline municipal police services. Each California city, yes, the mic is on. Each California city is guaranteed a minimum of 100,000 regardless of population. Typically, Campbell receives in excess of 100,000. COPS funds must be spent on personnel, equipment or supplies. COPS funds are not approved for capital improvement or construction projects. COPS funds are used to supplement, not supplant, existing funding for law enforcement services. The reason this is before you tonight is a requirement that the city council needs to approve the appropriation of COPS funds pursuant to a recommendation by the chief of police. Since 2002, the city council has approved COPS funds for 90% of a community service officer position. In fiscal year 2223 budget, council again approved the use of COPS funds for 90% of a community services officer position in the amount of $133,555. The remaining $140,275 in the COPS fund is proposed to be allocated for law enforcement equipment purchases, which has been consistent with past fiscal years. Some examples of some of the equipment that has been purchased just in the past few years. In-car camera systems, drone equipment, tablets and docking stations, TASER battery replacements, K9 vehicle equipment, moving radar systems for patrol cars, ballistic protection for officers and crisis negotiations equipment. The council recently approved the allocation of $19,533 of these funds at the August 2nd, 2022 council meeting for a drone. Some examples of equipment that staff has been researching and testing for potential use. Currently, all of the officers rifle plate ballistic protection panels are past expiration and need to be replaced. Staff has researched several companies and found viable options. The new plates are even light enough for an officer to wear on their normal patrol vest carrier, affording them not just protection from pistol rounds, but also rifle rounds when they're on patrol. Staff also researched and tested upgraded ballistic panels for our new SWAT tactical vests. Money was already allocated in the fiscal year 2223 budget to replace our expired SWAT tactical vests. With the use of some funds from the COPS grant, the vest can be upgraded before purchase to be over 40% lighter, which can help prevent injury, fatigue and afford the officer better ability for movement. An additional item being researched is ballistic helmets to replace some of the expired helmets currently being used in patrol. Staff had projected to make at least some of these purchases in fiscal year 22. However, availability, research and testing extended this past June 30th, 22. Only $4,995 of COPS grants were actually spent in fiscal year 22 compared to fiscal year 21 where $71,176 was spent. And in fiscal year 20, where $79,808 were spent. Staff's recommendation is that is consistent with past fiscal years that the city council adopt a resolution to authorize the use of COPS funds to fund 90% of a community service officer position and approve a budget adjustment to allocate the remaining COPS fund balance towards police equipment for fiscal year 2223. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions and finance manager, Norton Bong is also here if there are any additional questions.
Thank you, Captain Livingston. Are there questions from council? Please.
So, thank you very much for answering almost all my questions. I very much appreciate that. So what I would like to know is, is there accumulated funding from previous years that has yet to be spent? What is the total dollar value that would be in this account? So it'd be the 140,000 plus?
Good evening. The current fund balance of the COPS, the COPS grant is about $270,000. And of that, 271, 133 is allocated towards the CSO, 90% of that. And then the remainder is what we're requesting to be appropriate towards police equipment.
So the net, so it would be the 140 plus the delta between the 137 and the 220, whatever. So it's about 180,000?
140 plus 130, so about 270 in total.
270 is, that isn't included, but, and, and none of that's allocated to the officer?
Only 133 is allocated.
So I'm sorry, I keep asking the question incorrectly, I guess. Your total amount is 270 something. Okay. Out of that, the 130, whatever, is allocated. So in the total budget, it's only the 140 that's left.
Yes, ma'am.
There's nothing residual from previous years. That was my question.
Correct.
So all previous years have been, have expended. Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, then we'll open up the public hearings. Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak on this item? It'll be online, so seeing none, we'll close it, bring it back to council for discussion or if no discussion, a motion? That's what we're given.
Yeah, I would just, I have no objection to any of this, of course, but $140,000 is a lot of money to be discretionary spending by department. So the city manager had offered that he would review the expenditures. And I think that's an appropriate check and balance. And I would encourage that that be done.
Okay. Any other comments? It's a motion? Vice Mayor Bybee?
So I'll move that the city council adopt a resolution to authorize use of the supplemental law enforcement service funds to fund a community service officer and approve a budget adjustment to allocate the remaining SLESF balance towards police equipment for fiscal year 2223.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Bybee, second by Councilwoman Landry. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gibbons.
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilwoman Landry.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Bybee.
Hi.
Mayor Resnikov.
Hi. Thank you very much. That passes. Move to item nine, which is a continued public hearing. I'm going to abbreviate this long paragraph here. It was continued public hearing to discuss the implementation of permanent or near-permanent parklets in downtown. So we'll bring that back from our prior meeting. Introduction or, or presentation will be from?
I'm going to, Robbie Stuid, Community lawn director. I'm going to quickly hand it over to Leslie Parks. He'll cover the presentation. As you'll remember, this is a follow-up from two weeks ago, where we were before council and had some direction to staff to do some research and we brought that back to you. So let me queue up the presentation here for Ms. Parks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Resnikov, members of the city council, again, Leslie Parks, Economic Development Manager. We're here tonight to present to you the findings as a result of the direction that you. Sorry. Okay, should I use? Just stick this, okay. The direction that council gave us at the last council meeting on September 20th. The first was to, first direction was to conduct another survey of downtown businesses or downtown restaurants. And we did this by calling each of the restaurants directly. The question that was posed to them, will the restaurant participate in the semi-permanent parklet program or not, expecting no grant from the city? Second, additional findings we have, we have additional findings regarding prevailing wage and this, and city assistance. Third, options to the picket fence design and reducing construction costs. Okay, I see that there are eight, we say that there are eight businesses that said they would participate, but right now they're listed here on the screen. Six businesses declined, said they would not participate.
Sorry, just to, lights is on that list, but I didn't say all the time that I would like to walk to the park.
We'll, we'll open, we'll open the public hearing after, but thank you. Appreciate the, we'll open up in a few minutes.
So that's the summary of the findings from the business survey that we conducted. With respect to prevailing wage, prevailing wage applies to parklets unless city assistance for design work is limited to the lesser of $600,000 or 2% of the project cost. And actually, it's, it's for any public assistance. So it's 2% of the project cost or six lesser of that or $600,000, whichever is the least. If the parklet cost is $75,000, the city would contribute up to $1,510 based on 2% for design or other construction costs. Council also asked us to talk to our, our design team, and they're with us tonight, to come up with an option to the picket fence frame around the parklet. In this concept graphic, you can see an option of a different type of frame that would surround the parklet. A second option is this one, which has more of some random cutouts. But again, it deviates from the, from the picket fence look. Those design options only apply to the water tower. They would not be available for the orchard design, orchard parklet. With respect to reducing costs, we asked the design team to take another look at the costs and the design. They came back and said that a significant, any significant reduction would require a radical change in the design and would probably compromise safety. There is a baseline cost that just cannot be reduced. The options council can consider moving forward include, one, authorize semi, authorize the semi-permanent parklet program. Two, provide grants to businesses. Three, defer implementation of the program and extend temporary parklet, the temporary parklet program into 2023 and allow staff to research other options. With that, staff and the design team are available for any questions.
Okay, are there questions from council?
Yeah. Thanks. Uh, can you go back to the picture of the new orchard? Do you have the picture of the other one? There were two in the original proposal. Do you have a slide of the first, the other, what is it called? The?
I don't have a copy. I don't have a, kind of, is that? I don't, councilmember, I don't have a depiction of the, of the picket fence design, but this is the, these are the options that could replace that design.
But you don't have a picture of the other design?
I don't have, I didn't include a copy of the picket fence.
No, not the picket fence, the one with the panels.
The, just around the parklet.
I think she means the orchard one, Leslie.
Yeah, the orchard's picture.
No, I don't have one in this.
Okay, and what's the next one after this? She said the panels had cutouts?
Like a cutout, it's, it's smaller, this slide, this slide is smaller, but you can see it's more enclosed. There are some cutouts in a design.
Okay, so maybe the architect can answer. What is the basic difference other than the rounded corners?
So in this case, um, the, the idea with this one, especially with regards to the roof, was that it has some kinship with the water tower. So it has a kind of heavy rounded top and then the sort of thinner legs. The fencing of last time, I know people were concerned about water splashing through and they just didn't like the kind of openness of it. So in this case, we're taking a similar approach to the orchard parklet, which really had a kind of or abstract orchard design. And in this case, it's, the, the cutouts are based on images of the water tower and sort of like laser cut, remove, you know, laser cut subtractions of the water tower, the Campbell water tower around the, the railing. So those are the differences.
Okay, so this design has rounded outside corners. The other design does not, correct?
That is correct.
And then you said these panels are going to be custom made with laser etching of the water tower. How are those priced compared to the panels in the orchard design?
They're basically the same because both would be sort of one-off custom design. And I think we discussed that the city would be able to pay for that initial, that initial like the way to set up that laser cutting comes with a fee, but then once that gets set up once, it does not need to be paid again the next time. So the actual design part, if the city could pay that fee as part of the design fee, and it's not specific to any one part. if the city could pay that fee as part of the design fee, and it's not specific to any one parklet, it would just be specific to the manufacturer, and they would have like Campbell design, you know, Campbell Orchard Design or Campbell Orchard Design in their computer kind of library. So cost wise, it's the same.
How much is that to have the, if that is a blanket cost for all of them? I didn't see that in your estimate.
It is pretty low. I mean, it's
And is the rounded corner is going to cost more when the panels?
According to the builder, I don't think there was a huge difference in rounded corner cost, as you can see between the two. There was never really a large difference in cost. So, but the setup fee is, you know, not a, not a big. I think it is included in the panel cost. I think it's probably like twelve hundred dollars or something like that.
And they both have the twenty-four inch thick, deep concrete on each end? Both options?
Yes, they both have the concrete footing. There, like we explained previously, depending on where you are on site, you do have an option to have some of that twenty-four inch footing kind of go in and out, so you can get more space for tables, if you prefer. Or it's not so much a preference, actually, it's really related to site conditions, but otherwise you'll have a bench around the edge.
Okay, and then I asked this last time, and I don't know that I got an answer. There's posts behind the grate. Do they have a footing on them? There's nothing in the drawings that says, or are they just freestanding?
No, they would have a small footing underneath, yeah.
Under the deck?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Vice Mayor, you have your light on?
Leslie, could you? I'm confused a little bit about the, the fee waiver, the information you presented tonight on the two percent. Or, if you can go back to that slide.
We can go back here. Sharing this stuff. Do you want to go?
So you mentioned that, the, the, on the prevailing wage issue, that we could approve up to two percent of the project cost, which would be approximately one thousand five hundred and ten dollars.
If, if the project, let's see, let's say the, the parklet is seventy-five thousand dollars. Then as long as the city assistance was two percent of that cost, then prevailing wage would not apply.
Okay. And the staff report also talks about reducing the application fee. Is that, is the reduction of the application fee in addition to that two, two percent, or is it, is the two percent the, the maximum that's allowed as far as a grant or a subsidy to the business?
I will defer to the city attorney.
If we were to set a i- if we had a set fee and reduced it for a particular project, that would count toward the prevailing wage. Or could, would, would count to that, toward that two percent, but there's no requirement that we initially set a fee at all, in fact. So a- as long as we're doing it universally and not with respect to a particular project, then it does not count toward the two percent.
Well, now I'm, I'm more confused because the resolution that's in the packet specifically speaks to an application fee of, of five hundred dollars. So I, I'm confused as to where, where that applies and where this two percent applies.
So I can, I can jump in. So if we go back to, to two weeks ago, and again, the prevailing wage issue, we had recognized as a caution flag for, for grants and staff had went to trying to reduce all the, the fees on the fee in. What I hear from the city attorney is we can reduce our application fees. They're universal. It's not work on a specific project. And we proposed that separately. The fee was originally fifteen hundred dollars. It goes down to five hundred dollars. So that was another thousand dollars off. Separately, we recommended the council take away the security deposit, can provide more details on that, but that was a recommendation. And then last time we were talking about, could we subsidize or pay for the cost of the customization? And we've worked with the city attorney over the last two weeks. We found that as long as it's in that de minimis threshold, not more than two percent of the cost of the parklet, we can do that. So separate from the five hundred dollar application fee, separate from waiving the security fee, we can pay up to two percent. And our proposal would be when someone comes in and applies, we do a valuation on the parklet. If it's seventy-five thousand dollars, as Leslie said, we pay for up to two percent, which would be fifteen hundred. If the cost went up to a hundred thousand, we'd pay up to two thousand. So the, the total amount that the city would pay on that customization, customization cost would be two percent.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lopez?
I, I just have a couple of follow-ups. I want to make sure I'm understanding because I thought I heard two different things from the city attorney and community development director. What I, the, what I heard the city attorney say was if we don't set a fee, that doesn't count toward the two percent, which would make sense to me. What I'm hearing, what I'm seeing in the report, and what I just heard was that if we set at, set a fee at fifteen hundred, reduce it to five hundred, that, that's a, that's supporting them by a thousand dollars, but, but that's different from what I thought I heard. So could we just clarify, maybe start with the city attorney, what, what you meant and?
Yeah, I, I think you restated it correctly. If we had set a fee at a thousand dollars, for instance, and then on a project-by-project basis, we agreed to reduce it by five hundred dollars. That five hundred dollars would count toward the two percent. But we can set the fee, well, as long as it doesn't exceed our, our cost of processing, we can set the fee wherever we want. And that fee will not count. It is a regulatory fee. It is not a contribution toward the project.
Okay.
If, if we, if we set the fee.
Yeah. Now, I got it.
And then we reduce it on a project-by-project basis, that does contribute to the project specifically, and then it would count. Otherwise, it doesn't. If we do it universally, whatever we set it at, or don't set it at.
Thank you. That, I'll come back to that, but, but I think in comments, just to keep it clear. And then another follow-up. Who, who is keeping track under the, the proposed design of, of, of the, the structure here of the, the total cost? Because I, I, I guess what I'm concerned about is that that it's going to be variable to some extent, just depending on some factors outside of control labor cost, material might have slight variations, even if it's within the same range. So who, whose responsibility is it to keep track? Well, was it seventy-five percent, a hundred thousand? Then did we exceed the two percent, or did we not exceed it? Have, have we given that some thought?
Well, Oscar, building official, if he needs to. Every time someone comes in and applies for a permit, we do a valuation on, on that structure. We've, we've gotten upfront, these are standardized designs. They might change a little bit based on where they're located. But again, when they come in and apply for the parklet, we'd ask them to choose which type. Most of this is baked in. But at that point, we, we, the city would, would do a final valuation estimate on the cost of construction for that parklet. So that's the city.
Okay, all my questions, ma'am.
Councilmember Gibbons?
Just following up, but if the estimate for the contractor comes in higher, what happens?
Well, th- this is probably where I might have to ask our acting building official to come in if there's a disagreement between a contractor cost and our estimate cost. You got it, you got it. You got, you have to come up here, Bob.
Rarely does an estimate match a bid.
Establish all the costs for a to RS, RS means, which is a standard for estimating.
Yes, I'm familiar with the document.
That gives us the cost of what it should be, market rate.
So I, I, I would just offer that estimates rarely align with bids. So assuming that there's a discrepancy, do we have a process to handle that?
Yes, we balance the two together in a reasonable way. So if we know the cost of the materials, which is usually fairly fixed, then it's just a guess of the cost of the labor. And we talked about prevailing wage or valley wage, that could actually throw kind of a wild card into it.
I think, I'm sorry, I think
We balance what the estimate might be and what RS means would say it would be. And usually, though, they come up fairly close.
I'm sorry, I'm actually trying to ask a different question. So let me try and ask it again. The city doesn't go out for bids on these parklets. The parklets are bid by the individual property or business.
Correct.
Okay, so the city can provide an estimate based on the drawing set. But when the individual contractor bids, and they might be competitive bids, there might be two or three bidders. But there's no guarantee that those would align with the estimate the city provided.
Correct.
So my question is, what's the process for accepting a higher bid such that business A would pay? I'm going to pick, we start at seventy-five, the bid comes in at eighty, eighty-five, and ninety. So business A picks the bid at eighty. The next business gets a bid at eighty, eighty-five, ninety, and that bid comes in at eighty-five, and they'll take that bid. How, how will that impact our thoughts? I, I think the possibility of it is fairly significant, fairly, fairly realistic that there'll be a discrepancy. So I'm just asking how we would propose to handle that because we are not in contract with the builders?
If we go out to multiple bids, then we have two or three bids, and then we also have an RS means bid. We can take the average of all of them, and it will be fairly close and reasonable. And that's really what we're looking for, is a reasonable cost for the project. So if one person gets, accepts a bid for seventy-five thousand, another person accepts a bid for eighty-five thousand, the cost of the permit really doesn't change a whole lot.
I'm not talking about the cost of the permit. I'm sorry. That's where I think we're missing.
I'm sorry, let me maybe interject. I think I understand the question. So if we're estimating our two percent, we're trying to stay under the prevailing wage exception. And we provide, I think the question is if we provide an expectation that's two percent of seventy-five thousand, what if the parklet comes in less or more than that? And throws off our two percent calculation? How, how do we ratify that? How do we rectify that? I think that's the question.
I think I know, I clearly understand. So it's just a point is that two percent, you got to take it off of some number. You have to choose what that number might be.
So does the city attorney, so thank you for the clarification. Is it appropriate to, for the city to utilize its estimate? And say two percent of the, of the amount is based on the city's estimate irrespective of what happens out in the field?
I, I, I think under the law, we would be required to use the actual number, not an estimate of what, of what the cost was. So we may need a verification process if we're using a percentage as our, as our guide.
Okay.
You know, that we could cap the amount of the city's expenditures so that if, so that it doesn't go over a certain number. But we definitely would, want to verify that the cost is not lower than the seventy-five percent and give them more than two percent or
Right, so all I'm
Both the applicant and the city could be in trouble.
Right, so I, I appreciate the discussion. The purpose of the discussion is to see what process needs to be in place to handle these types of situations which are likely to happen. I don't know, we necessarily have to have the answers, but we have to recognize that that potential exists if we're going to make this kind of decision on, on, on that.
I just say, I mean, I'd say there's no way we're going to figure out every detail tonight. The principle in place, staff is recommending that no matter the cost, and we'll, we'll figure out a method to know the, the final cost, and we'll bring, I mean, this is a public works project in the end, we'll bring public works into it because it's in the right way. That aside, the, the principle will be that the city would not pay more than two percent of that cost. We'll just have to finalize the process to get to identifying that cost.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. I just want to make sure that the resolution covers that. I'm not quite sure we're there yet, but so that, that was a follow-up to the earlier questions. I have my own questions now. And I'll make, I'll go to the easy questions first. So at the last meeting, we talked, we were asked by staff, and in the, in the presentation, several questions, one of which was the railing style. And one was the canopy, and one was the height of a canopy and so forth. And we, we didn't answer those. And I wanted to make sure we had an opportunity tonight to bring full circle because I believe that's what you're asking in order for the council to go forward. The council needs to know what they're going forward with. So I would simply put that I think one comment was made, if we do the, the decorative panel with the water, the laser cuts, and this is me speaking, question, I'm trying to do it a question. That's one solution. What I can't tell from the material tonight, let's see, is in the present, in the, in the staff report, there's a slide that shows two different canopy styles. One is a thin, narrow canopy style, and the other one is a thicker style. Okay, which one are we talking about at this point? Does staff picking, recommending one?
Well, again, I'll start, I'll have Rudy or design consultant, Lee. And again, we asked the design consultant to prepare two options. At one point, there was the thought that the city could, could pick one of those two options. I think at that, at this point, from, from staff's perspective, we're comfortable with either option being used. If council has a direction to only have one design picked, you, you can do that. But at this point, what's on the table is both options would be approved. This is the orchard and the water tower with the roof or with no roof. And when applicants come in, they could choose from one of those two options to go forward.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. I have lots of other questions, but I think for now, that was just where I was trying to understand. So thank you.
Councilwoman Landry?
I'm going to go back to the money. How much has the architect been paid?
See, I don't, I don't have that answer for you tonight.
Ten thousand, twenty thousand.
The contract was for thirty thousand. I can't tell you tonight how much they've been paid.
The architect contract was about thirty thousand.
Correct.
Okay, and the mold, the, the pre-panel, whatever we need to pay for, I'm guessing it's a couple thousand dollars. So how does the thirty thousand dollars for the architect and the paint, the whatever the cost for these, the artwork, does that factor into this fifteen hundred dollars max per parklet? Because right there, you've spent, you're over the, because there's only eight of them.
The design work that was done here was purely for regulatory purposes, to tell the applicants, this is what you can have. As such, it does not count toward the prevailing wage limits.
Good. Okay, so right now, the fifteen hundred, ten dollars, whatever it is, is that, that would be something that we would say, yes, we can, we want to contribute that. Versus, because in the staff report, there is a mention of something, I think the magnitude of forty thousand is in there. So anything over the fifteen, the developer has to pay prevailing wage. Anything less than our fifteen hundred contribution, they do not have to pay prevailing wage. And that thirty grand doesn't count towards that.
Correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions, Vice Mayor?
If we could go back to the money again, I'm, I'm still confused. If, so the way I understand it is that each business is going to be doing their own project. And potentially, let's say you have five, five businesses and potentially all five could have a different price depending on what structure they choose or what, if with a roof, without a roof. So wouldn't the two percent apply to what the the cost of the individual business? business? And then, so, so each one would be, uh, uh, the two percent would apply individually to each. So, so we're not having a, a, a average of, of the five. Okay, thank you.
Specific to each, each proposal.
Okay.
Okay, so no other questions for now. Thank you. I'm sure we'll have more after, when we get a discussion. We'll open the public hearing. Anybody can speak on this item for up to two minutes. I don't see anybody online. Is that correct? But I know, no, I, I, I remember that. I was just checking, nobody online. Sorry, you wanted to come up and you want to speak earlier, please come on up. You're welcome to come to the podium and speak for two minutes and, please. If you'd like, give us your name and, and who you're representing, that'd be great.
Sorry, I haven't been here. I usually do these meetings in Los Catos.
And the look is different.
Yeah, the beard too. Good to see you, Liz. How are you? Uh, my name is Alex Holt. I'm the founder CEO of Flights Restaurant Group. We have uh, locations in Campbell, uh, San Jose, Burlingame, Las Vegas, and we are about to start a nationwide franchise request. I've been on several different groups discussing these parklets. I think what uh, Campbell has going for them is that you guys have been kind of smart and seen what everyone else has done. Because a lot of people made a lot of mistakes. They spent a lot of money they didn't need to. Uh, some cities did a really poor job. And I think that you guys have a golden opportunity to do the work and see what the cities around us have done, good and bad. Um, I'm sure they're willing to share, like, that's what I'm hearing, that they would be. I talked to a couple of people, both in Burlingame and Los Catos, and they were very willing to share what went good and what didn't go well. Um, I think that it's very important that we actually reach out to all these restaurants and get the full buy-in. Everyone's busy. We're struggling with labor shortages. Uh, the cost of goods are crazy. Uh, people are still a little scared to come out or sales are down. Uh, downtown Campbell is getting really beat up by downtown Los Catos who kind of popped back up uh, during the pandemic because of the work that they did and being pretty creative with their chamber of commerce and doing some street festivals and things. So Los Catos has kind of gained traction. And then you also have Prune Yard, who's done an incredible job to kind of bring some really strong restaurants and other ventures that have really stolen a lot of the customer base. So downtown Campbell is now facing um, kind of the similar situation. When I was standing in the exact council room in Los Catos about five, six years ago, when I said, do you guys want to be Campbell or do you want to be Saratoga? And basically, my point was, they had to streamline their policies. They had to be more welcoming. They had to open up to invite businesses that actually attract uh, people. Do you want me to stop talking?
Can, 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 we don't have a lot of people, so I, like, I think it's worth us hearing, uh.
So yeah, basically, we're in this crossroads now in downtown Campbell where if we're gonna compete with Prune Yard and downtown Los Catos, we first of all need to build these parklets because people want to sit outside. We need to make them look attractive, but we also need to be respectful with the cost so that most more people can participate in this. Because a lot of people are hurting. There's a lot of restaurants that are on the brink of bankruptcy. That is the truth. And it's not gonna go away anytime soon with what's coming down the road in the economy and everything that's going on. So I think that's just like very important for me to, to say that it's very important that we keep the, the grants and the support as good as possible. I think if I don't remember incorrectly, Los Catos offered forty thousand dollars to each restaurant who wanted to uh, do a parklet and it was kind of like, out there, we contribute this much. Whether it's eighty thousand, ninety thousand, a hundred thousand to build it, you get forty thousand from us. And then in the beginning, the interest wasn't very big, but as people started getting this built and seeing how good it looked, everyone piled on. Now, almost every single business that has a good storefront for a parklet is getting one built. So I really think that Campbell needs that and it's gonna help with the look and the feel of that European vibe that we had when we actually had traffic shutdown. I don't know. If you guys were walking the streets, I think it was twenty twenty, summer of twenty twenty, right when we came over the worst hurdle of COVID, like it was sizzling on the streets. It was so warm, so welcoming. I felt like I was in Barcelona. Uh, there was tables everywhere and people everywhere and it was super exciting to see. And then since then, again, we've lost that steam in downtown Campbell. And I think you can ask pretty much any restaurant owner that sales are down fifteen, twenty, thirty percent. And it's very important that we do these things right and make it come back.
Okay, thank you very much. Quick question here.
Um, you tried to talk earlier and you said you should be on the list of the, because we only have eight and you're not on the list. Is that what you said?
Um, I was very surprised to see flights on that list, so I was just kind of curious how that list was. Because I've been in meetings here, like I've come to several of the meetings. I've been very vocal and open to help. Um, I've been working with these guys, answering emails, trying to be proactive because I have been involved um, with other cities. Um.
But you want, you want a parklet.
We.
But you're not in the list of who wants one, is what you're saying.
Definitely want one, yes.
So that won't preclude anything here, but, but appreciate it. Okay.
And then I did forget one important topic. Um, and I don't know all the rules, but I do know that one of the critical elements to make it successful is to have electricity. So you can have like, like low voltage lighting to give light during the winter months. And also uh, the option for electrical heat so you can keep people warm. Because if you don't get those elements, like you might as well just have tables out on the streets. So that's what I've seen from other cities that have done it right or versus wrong.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. I went a little long here because we haven't had, unfortunately, we haven't had a large voice of people coming in from downtown. From the owners, so appreciate your input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Ken, did you want to speak as well? Okay. Seeing nobody else, seeing nobody else, we'll, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion. Councilwoman Givens?
Um, thank you. Um, I appreciate having um, the information from staff and from Alex. I also reached out to uh, Randy Munster to um, get a little more specific uh, based on the newspaper article where he was quoted um, and. So um, I will um, try, try and tie back two things. One is the design considerations, which Alex just started to hit on, and then um, come back uh, on the funding. So I will do my best to limit myself to five minutes here. Uh, first of all, I think um, one of the things about the design that we talked about last time, uh, we talked, uh, was the height and the roof. And we were questioning the ten-foot height versus an eight-foot height. And I would offer um, that I don't think we still have the information about how that height differential fits into um, the streetscape with the trees and the conflict with the trees. Um, so I think that's something that's a bit of a challenge. But Randy pointed out that um, if we make them ten feet with the wide uh, border, um, that we may in fact block his sign on his building, which is his major advertising statement. Um, sushi confidential. I think the same would be true for flights and for other restaurants. So I think that's a design consideration um, that we need to really um, address. Um, the second was, I asked if he wanted, uh, wanted to use, I thought what he had there was um, non-waterproof roof. And he said, no, no, he's gone back in and put waterproofing on top of his uh, things. And um, he said, there's no value and I'm sure, uh, we'll see if Alex had any comment. There's no value in having an outdoor space. Either you do put the canopies up with a full cover to protect from the rain, or you don't put the canopies at all. I mean, so in terms of investment, um, you do one or the other. So um, it looked to me as if one of the solutions with the wide, what I'm gonna call the wide view um, perimeter has just slots in the middle of fabric or material to, for shade, but not for waterproofing. I'm not, have a clear answer on that. But I think um, to me, um, I would um, ask other thoughts on having a solid roof to make it waterproof, um, kind of thing. I think the height is a bit um, unknown. I, I do think that um, the uh, railing that we talked about last time, it's three feet six high, which is higher than a lot of things that are out there now. And I thought that that could go down. Um, and I also thought we had talked, I think it was um, Councilwoman Landry talked about having a, a blank peak place in that perimeter metal material where somebody could put a sign. So when you're not driving down the street, you're just seeing all the same thing. You want to get a sense of, here's sushi, here's flights. Um, here's um, any other one. And you, you have a sense of identity at eyesight. Um, as well as just, you don't want to have the monotony um, going down the street. I, uh, the issue of heating, I think is really important. And um, I've checked around and the electric um, heating is uh, seems to be the heating of choice because they do want to have lighting. Once you have lighting, you have electrical power to the location. And I know there's been some concern about needing to upgrade panels. It's hard to make such a broad assumption because this, the restaurants do have a lot of electrical use. They do have some, they may be at capacity, we don't know, but to um, eliminate um, the heating requirement, electrical heating, um, with an unknown cost, I think is, is um, not where we want to go. I think electric heating and I think others, it's much easier for the businesses not to have to deal with the storage of all the propane tanks. Um, never mind the risks of uh, associated with those. So um, the other thing um, has to do with height is if you have a wide perimeter, this, the electric can go. If you, if you go at eight feet, the electric uh, heater and the ceiling might be at seven feet. So maybe you've got to be nine feet or ten feet. I don't know the answer to that. Um, I don't know how the roofs drain. That was just um, another question. And I'm assuming the cost is for two parking stalls, so roughly forty, forty-five feet? Is that correct? It's not per parking stall, it's for every two parking stalls?
That's correct.
Good, okay, thank you for that. Um, okay. Uh, I, I guess, um, so those, those are some broad topics that I hope we have some discussion on, because I think they're, they're very relevant. My next big topic is the money. I, I do not think the city should take prevailing wage into discussion, into consideration for this. Our solution is to find a way to support our businesses. I know we, we've done a lot and a lot of good things, but the world is bumpy. And um, I think that to do something and say, well, they're not going to pay prevailing wage, it just doesn't feel right to me. Simple as that, doesn't feel right to me. Um, I did check, Los Catos did give grants of forty-five thousand per parklet. Um, I think that it would be worth discussing with my colleagues here, that if we have nine or ten businesses, we allocate forty thousand dollars, set amounts to all of them, which is four hundred thousand dollars, which is a lot of money. Staff hasn't come back to us with an ARPA summary um, yet. Um, hopefully that'll be soon. We know we do have money in ARPA funds and uh, I think that this is the right thing to do. This is going to be a permanent solution to expanding businesses. It's going to be an aesthetic and safe solution um, for our businesses. So I would like to take the prevailing wage discussion off the table. And I would like to suggest that we do what Los Catos did, which is, and they're having financial trouble. They're, they're no, nowhere near as solvent as we are. I think we should use the ARPA funds we have to support a set number of uh, parklets with a flat grant. I made my limit.
Thank you.
Um, I, so you made it easy for me. Uh, I think, I think I'll be a lot shorter because I, I can basically agree with everything. You just had a lot of it, you know, matches up with where I was going with this. I hadn't considered the um, the height. So that would definitely with the signage be something to consider. Um, I, I, I agree about the electrical, especially with what we heard today. Um, I'll, I'll add before getting into the, the price, that in terms of design, my really, my other really strong feedback would, would be, and I, I don't know that the, 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 I, I just want to allow the options. And so I, I know there is some question of, you know, what do, do we narrow it down? I think let's, let's have the set options, let the businesses make the decision of which one that they want to go with. But that, that came across clearly in, in the survey that within the, the range of what, what's acceptable. Um, allow the businesses to make some of those decisions. So that would just be my feedback. But, but uh, uh, otherwise really, y, 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 you know, I have my own thoughts on the numbers and specifics, but really it was gonna go to the same place. I, I think based off the discussion that we heard and really helpful questions, I think from the council and the answers from staff to help, help get some of the practicalities of this. I, I, I think we really practically, that I see have one of two options, which is either w, w, we can take a limited uh, approach of uh, getting seeing where we, we can get rid of some of the fees as much as possible to, to not e- exceed some of the limits. And, and just for the context, some of the folks in, in the, in the room, because we, we've had a, a, a number of discussions. Um, if, if anyone's and, and, you know, I, o- others could, staff could, could state this um, uh, better. But just for context about why we're looking at some of the limits of, of the support, I, I think the overarching goal clearly is to support the businesses. That's always um, been consistent. Um, but there is some discussion that, well, if we do a larger grant, it might trigger prevailing wage requirement. I, y, y, you know, I, I, I really identify with what you said of, I don't know that it's our place as a city to be making that decision crafting policy uh, uh, around that or, or that it would necessarily lead to, to the best program or, or way of supporting. So, so that would just be my feedback. So, so that's one option is really trying to limit the, the fees and, and just in, in a way. Um, but as was brought up in, in the questions, then I get nervous about, well, are the costs are gonna be variable. It's, and, and just depending on which, even if the same supply is just depending on the contractor that different businesses go with, the, the, the bids are gonna be different. And, and so um, having to do some kind of very verification process that then puts both the business and the city on, on the hook really makes me nervous with that practically. Um, so as I brought up at the end of the last meeting, um, the, the other option that, that I see is going to, to a larger grant. Um, and I, I'd be open to the numbers. I was thinking four hundred fifty or five hundred thousand. But I certainly think that would be an appropriate use um, of ARPA funds at, at this stage. We, we've long talked when we've had the ARPA discussion um, uh, about supporting our, our local businesses in some way. So I'd, I'd probably want to see some kind of an overall cap, something that allows for some degree of, of maybe growing, growing interest. But I, I have a feeling based off the survey that we did, and, and I, which I want to say thank you to staff, by the way, for coming back. Um, and, and the short amount of time that we had with the additional information, which was very helpful for me. Um, it, it sounds like for the businesses that said, no, they would not be interested. I, I don't know that the, it, it sounds like they, they'd want up to half of the, the total amount covered. And, and I'm, I'm not sure that that, that degree is, is feasible for, for the ones who aren't interested. So I think we're most likely looking at a, a similar range, nine or ten of, of um, the ones that have indicated interest. Um, so I'd still want some kind of a cap, whether it's a cap on the amount of businesses, twelve or, you know, what, it's some, some amount that allows if, if there's anyone else who's interested. Um, but the, y, you mentioned four hundred thousand? For, for, I, yeah, yeah, I do, I, four fifty, five hundred, for me, I, I think that's an appropriate range to kind of be talking about. So that's just where I am now from just a practical standpoint, all the, all the reasons named. Um, but we'll, we'll be very interested in, in the discussion and, and thank you, Alex, for, for coming and, and sharing your feedback and, and being engaged. It's appreciated.
Councilman, Councilwoman Landry?
Yes, thank you. Thank you to staff. Um, this has been a lot of work, uh, ongoing process and thank you to the architect. Um, okay, so topics, the roof, the thick roof design that looks, I think you told me it was eighteen inches with the slats. I don't like it all. I think it's too boxy. And it was interesting in the discussion when uh, one of us asked about wood, the comment was it would be too boxy. Well, I think that big thick, looks like it's about that thick, um, would really create kind of this heavy, overhanging thick look. I don't like that at all. Um, the thin metal roof, it looks like it had a standing seam. I like that one. I'm worried about the height, but does every single one have to be the exact same height? Could some be at eight feet? Could some be at nine feet? Could some be at 10 feet? Or do they all have to be exactly the same? Because then if they are all exactly the same, you're going to have to go out and measure everybody's sign and make sure you miss the sign. But that you're not too low because if they want to hang heaters, so it's not just say, okay, 10 feet. We have to kind of make sure it may be nine feet, six inches. So that's something to leave up to the design team. But we need to be conscious of the trees and when I left last time, I drove down the street and tried to eyeball, they look like they're about 12 feet. So we may be okay, but we have to worry about the trees, we have to worry about the sign. We have to worry about the clearance and if anything hangs like lights or electrical or heaters. The comment was have two designs, but what I, okay, let me step back a second. I see this as a streetscape master plan to some extent. We're trying to create a new streetscape look. And if we did a streetscape full-blown master plan, which I know Liz worked on when the trees went in and the little plaques. But a city would spend a million or two million dollars to build a streetscape. I don't know what it costs years ago, but so to me, if we want different, two different designs. One has rounded corners on the outside, which is the most visually prominent area down the street and the other has square corners. I don't know that that's going to look good. My my thinking is that this should be a cohesive, like a streetscape project. You all use the same light fixtures. Y'all use the same tree grate, you know, because we're talking about all wood flooring, the panels would match. And so I think we should pick whether we have curved corners or square corners. I like the rounded corners. I can't help but think the rounded corner panels though are going to cost more and maybe it's in the thousand range. But rounded curved panels will cost more. The if we make a custom panel, then we should basically copyright it. And say, no other city can use our panel because we are trying to create a unique look for Campbell. And so, you know, whatever the design, you you don't let that manufacturer sell those panels to somebody else to match the design. From my, we didn't ever copyright the water tower and everybody uses it, so have something unique. There wasn't addressed about potentially being able to have a sign on the wall. I don't know about the metal panel part, but on the concrete buttress, lower two feet, I think it is. Los Gatos has signs on their concrete walls. So I just no signage wasn't mentioned and that would make if everything else is consistent. The having some sign would then make it unique for each business. So you could tell, I don't know if that fits on the metal panel, the concrete. But I think we should allow, are you are you going to answer my question here?
I just wanted to offer as a, so from staff's perspective, and I am hearing council comment on this, we had proposed no signs. Again, the idea was it was a uniformed design aesthetic that it wasn't being used for advertising. If councils consensus and direction is to allow signs, that that would be your prognosis, but it wasn't. The staff recommendation was not to allow signs in the parklets and just two other points. I think I I heard two council members had questions on the height of the of the parklet. And on the roofs, I just did want to have the opportunity for our design consultant Rudy. I thought she there are some adjustments she was looking at on the height, just just to clarify those questions you have. If you could, Rudy.
Okay, let me, because she might have to answer other questions, so let me finish my topics here. Okay, so the railing height, I don't know why we need more than, I mean, typically it's forty-two inch total. For a long traffic, so if the panel's two feet, the lower part is two and a half feet. That seems reasonable to prevent a car from hitting it and that kind of stuff. So the shorter the railing height overall, the better from my perspective. The custom panel, I like I like the rounded corners, but then all should have the rounded corners. I don't think that thick roof with the slats work. I agree with Liz about the rain. And if you're going to put a roof, you might as well have it be waterproof. I I would be interested in letting a business have their name, not advertising. So you could have a plaque on the metal on the outside with the business name. I'd be open to that, but we haven't seen anything. I think the heaters are a big deal and our next item tonight is talking about reach codes and potentially getting rid of gas. And now we're going to let everybody bring in the propane gas burner seems kind of contradictory. And if we do allow them, then we need to be clear on, you guys said you were going to talk to the fire marshal on if those. Tanks you can buy at seven eleven, the white propane tanks with the heater grill on it. If those are really going to be acceptable by the fire department. Running electrical out to these parklets, how you getting there? You gotta probably go aerial. We don't want to cut the sidewalk and you got to get from your building wall out over. So how do you suspend that and get power to them battery? I don't know what you want to do, but you got to consider how to get electrical over to it. I'm supportive of the forty plus forty plus or minus to contribute. Again, this to me is a streetscape project. We're going to enhance us. We're going to get more sales tax. We're going to have a better budget. We're going to have more lively downtown and the businesses are going to do better. And so I would support it and I do think. Living in this area is expensive and the ability to pay prevailing wage would be absolutely wonderful. That supports not just our businesses, but the members of our community that, you know, prevailing wages look better than minimum wage. So let me think, I think I got those all. Oh, and then about the, don't let anybody else buy our panels if the company has a template that no one else gets to use it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Byrie.
I just wanted to quickly address the signage issue. Currently, currently, our municipal code prohibits all signage in the public right of way, so we would have to amend the municipal code. To allow signage in this instance, so that would be something that would have to come back later. It's not something you could act on tonight.
And Bill, a quick question, Bill, on that. Being that you can't regulate what's on a sign?
That's true.
So it could then turn in just for future discussion, it could then turn into something beyond just a name?
It could.
Okay, for another night. Say, listen. Vice Mayor.
So I. Like the design that was presented tonight with the the closed in, so I'll start off with that. I'm not, I wouldn't support signage on on the parklets. We don't have signage on them now and people don't seem to have any difficulty locating the restaurant. So I I wouldn't support signage on on them. I do believe that. We should have options for the individual businesses to choose their design. For me, I I'd like to see a uniform look, but I don't want it to be identical. I think it it's up to each individual restaurant to determine what their needs are and and whether they want a roof. Whether they want, don't want a roof. The heating, again, I think should be up to the individual businesses. They some restaurants may need to upgrade their panels and that's could be costly. So again, it's up to them to to determine what their financial resources are and whether or not they want to go to that expense. As far as the use of use of the ARPA money, I'm I'm not convinced that that's an appropriate use of funds. Given that to me, this benefits a a handful of restaurants in the downtown. Where we have many other businesses in the city that. Are struggling or have struggled. And I believe that we've really supported the downtown businesses through the pandemic with the the temporary parklets and and paying for those. And I feel that it's an investment for these restaurants to 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 pay for their parklets. And and be part of the community. So I'm not convinced that. I would want to use the ARPA funds and I would ask what. You you have an initial group of restaurants that want to join in, what happens if. Other restaurants in the future want to add, want to add on to it. Where where are those funds going to come from if you've if you've given forty thousand dollars to to the initial group? So I think that needs to be. A discussion point. So that's where I'll leave it at the moment.
Thank you, and you took a lot of the points I was going to make. Let me just start with thanking thanking staff and Rob. Because I I one thing I did ask last time was go out and speak to people and give us a feel for. Who's interested in whether it's eight or whether it's nine or so, that that tells us it's real and people want it. So I'm really happy to see that. I agree with the vice mayor and the the term I wrote down in my notes was flexibility. So so within within, we can have a design parameter, so things look similar and have a type of theme. But within the actual design. Where there's a roof, what kind of power they use, what kind of heaters they use, I think that ought to be up to the to the individual places that have a that are predisposed to one. To to one thing or another, or have an electrical issue where they do need a panel versus somebody else doesn't need a panel. I don't think we need to. We need to have policy to tell them how to do that. And I think we can still have a general theme, if you will, not a design that meets that criteria. With regards to the money, I'm mixed. I do want to help, but I I guess with terms of ARPA funds. I'll go back. I'd like to go back to the city manager, maybe finance director and just say, there's an opportunity cost to using ARPA funds. So if half a million dollars get used, what we should know what, when we say put something on the agenda, what comes off? We if we do that, what doesn't get done? A comment was made, you know, Los Gatos did this and they're worse shaped than us, but one of the reasons, you know, we're we are in better financial position than a number of cities around here. We were very judicious in how we spent money and we didn't want to use reserves and we did make cutbacks with labor and all that stuff. So we've been really conservative on that and we may need to be in the future. The other piece of of the money part the vice mayor alluded to was I had written the same thing down. So we know there's eight or nine and I respect that they they stepped up. That's what I wanted to find out. Who wants to step up and we should treat them as well as we can. But are we limiting it limiting it them to then to some number? What happens in the future? Do we cut it off at some point? I don't know what that if that creates issues or not. But it's 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 just a concern of how would we do this? And maybe there's a number I'm comfortable with that that is beyond what we've offered today, but is not forty thousand per. It sounds like we have a lot of interest, a good number of of places interested without going a lot higher. But there may be a median ground there where we really assist those who have identified that they're in now and leave it at that. The other comment I just wanted to make was regarding signage. You know, having been at this a long time and and even dating back to planning. City attorneys trained me well, that's going to raise that's going to raise other issues when we get into discussion. That can turn into something we really don't want, so be really careful on that. Anytime we do signage and we do sign exceptions and stuff like that. It tends to open up other other possibilities, other problems. So maybe it's not needed because all these should have pretty good visible signs on the associated buildings. But it's just a thought. We're not going to have that discussion tonight, but that's a future discussion that's going to cause some pain. It always does. Did you have a, Rob, you came up to?
I was happy to provide some responses to some of the.
We will had a a weigh in, so please, and then we can come back to to council.
Start with the small and and go to the big, didn't want to interrupt. On the heaters, they've been designed and we talked to the fire marshal to allow either with a roof, without a roof, with propane or with electric. It's their choice. If they want to do electric, they'd have to consider the panel upgrades. It's it's the choice of the restaurant, but they are designed to allow all those options. On the design issues, I'd I'd ask our design consultant to weigh in. But I'll get to the the fiscal issue first. I will note, again, the poll you have, the question that was posed to the restaurants was presumed that the the city has given you no grants. At this point, are you in? And that's the number we got. We haven't asked the question yet. I would I would presume that if they they do, they were getting a grant of forty thousand dollars. That number would go up. I can't tell you today what that number is. In a bunch of caution, we did design a program to allow up to sixteen parklets. If you took sixteen at forty thousand each, that's about six hundred and forty thousand dollars. So e- either one to be equitable for all, that would be the cost of the subsidy to make it worth your while with the prevailing wage. Or the council would have to design some sort of system, constrain some sort of equity issue where you don't allow a certain number in. That the door under the first phase and put some consideration to that. And that's on those two questions. If if you did want a response on some of the design issues, I was going to ask Rudy to go on it, go ahead and weigh in.
Rob, let me ask you one one question. And maybe this depends on how much. Percentage or how much money the city pays, but what hap- once this is built and whether it's built with or without city funds. Who who owns that structure? What happens when a business goes out and is replaced by another business? This this belongs now to the property owner. It stays with the business. It's part of the CUP. The city has a stake in it, like where's?
Well, it's a bit of both. I mean, it is in the public right of way, and so we we are giving them a a operation to build this parklet within the right of way. It's it's being issued an encroachment permit. And there are semi-permit parklets in tennis at some point. If a restaurant did go bankrupt, it it could go out as we've come to realize this is a huge investment for seventy-five to hundred thousand dollars. We think it's like very unlikely at that sort of investment in the design you're seeing. That even if a restaurant left, the property owner would probably use that as an asset for the next restaurant that came in. So we don't, we don't think it's likely.
So it it is owned by the property owner?
Yes, that's correct.
So in the case of these flights as an example, flights took over another spot. If that spot had a park what went out, flights would just assume that as part of their lease because the property owner owned the owned that along with owning the building.
If if the restaurant's lease ended and they moved out, yes, the park would still be there.
Park would be there unless unless the owner decided to remove it, I guess.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about that earlier on. I thought we had written down some some parameters on how we would handle that. Because it got, it was, it was definitely a.
It seems like an asset. I mean, it seems like that wouldn't be a problem, we're just wondering.
I think, yeah, the question is why we had wanted at the time is when the discussion came. Of why the property owners weren't stepping up because it's an asset for their property. And to have the business pay for this seems seems. A little short sighted on the property owner's side, but such as business, I guess. So I I understand, one, I understand the discussion about the APRA funds. And I agree that staff is has a to-do list for us to come back and and. Give us an update on ARPA funds and where we stand. The last I knew it was better than what we had originally projected, so otherwise I wouldn't have suggested it. Two, yes, I absolutely agree we need a cap. And whether that's four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, I think that's up to. Discussion. Three, I think that. We had already set a limit of sixteen businesses. And if we said, you know, five hundred thousand divided by sixteen, that whatever money it is, it is, and that's the way it goes. I'm I'm fine because we have set those rules originally, so we're just sticking to them. And that's, I think, is fine. I think that Alex Halt said something very, very important. Which is downtown Campbell is slipping a little. And Prun Yard is doing a superb job. Los Gatos is doing a superb job. I think that it's like anything, you have to to have the businesses backs. So that's why I'm going this way. It's very simple. I just think that. We need to to continue to support the. Potential for recession is high. Who knows about during COVID? So I think. I think actually Councilwoman Landry said something quite pertinent, which is it really is. Updating our our master plan for the downtown. And I I think it is important to look at it that way. So those are kind of my big picture comments and I would support a motion that would do something like that. I would offer that. I think one of the things that they're doing in. Morgan Hill is they're allowing the businesses to save initial funds by not putting on canopies. We could possibly do that. They can be designed to have the canopies added later. I do think the canopies need to be solid, based on the feedback from the businesses I've spoken with. The canopies do need to be solid to be viable to contribute to the businesses. The one that's skinny doesn't work well with having electric heaters hanging down from the ceiling or whatever. Hanging from the ceiling, so I think that's missing a little bit. I think the sign issue, I understand the sign issue. There's always a ways around that, but I'm not so fussed. That's not a solvable problem at this point. I do think we don't know enough enough information about what's the right height. Have to do, you know, a look around the city, I think. I I I do think that that I would like to see less costly solutions, but we don't seem to be going there. So I'm accepting where we are now, but I do think we need to have a solid roof with a little bit of a lip. That would at least conceal ceiling mounted light fixtures and. with a little bit of a a lip that would at least conceal ceiling mounted light fixtures and uh electrical um heaters. I think I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, appreciate the discussion, um I I just want to say, and I've said this before, but just where where I'm coming from with with uh just the and and even the amounts, but the the general principle of of wanting to to show show support to the businesses is that I really think this is a benefit for the entire community and and the city, I I don't see this at at all as just benefiting the the businesses on on the list or who'd be part of the program. Um, I I think I've heard consistently from residents that that the parklets are an added uh amenity, and I I think beautifying them in the downtown would would be a a really strong positive. And they bring in visitors from from around Campbell, from outside Campbell who uh go and as has been said, make make our our downtown lively, go and patronize other businesses. So so I I just like the I that's really what I'm thinking of is that overall vitality in the community and 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 not just seeing it, well, you know, with which nine or ten businesses do are are we helping out here, it's it's uh much more holistic discussion for for me than that. And also just, I I want to say, I'm not, a couple other people throw around forty thousand, I'm I'm not personally married to that, I I think something in that general range is is probably what would be helpful. Um, but I'm open to other amounts, especially if they would help make any council members a little more comfortable um with with the parameters here, I'm I I just want to say that I'm I'm flexible there. And and I'll I'll just second some of what what was said is I I think the the flexibility is is really um a a positive. And and so just wanting to to maintain that, but um welcome others' thoughts on some of those issues.
Thank you, Councilman Landry.
Yeah, can you bring up the slide with the new design with the rail, the panels? Please. The there's the one after that, I think. That one. Uh, okay, so when we're talking about the design elements. Each park would have, each parklet would have a similar floor, which would be wood. Would have a similar grate along the frontage, that black strip. You'd have concrete two foot wide whatever at each end for preventing the cars from uh hitting or moving it. And so those are all the same. Then this design shows rounded outside corners and the other design shows squared off corners. And really, when it comes to the actual configuration, that's pretty much the big difference is the rounded corners versus the squared off corners. And I like the rounded corners and I think it would look good to have them all be round. But what you we could do is say two panel designs, so you could have this water tower etched panel. Or you can go back to the other one which had like looks like a tree with some holes and some artwork, so that's then where you start creating uniqueness within each one. Uh, the the panel could be different, and then whether you had a solid roof or no roof. Um, and then internally with inside of how wide, what benches, what planting pocket pockets to me, then that is where your uniqueness comes in, that that's what you don't need to have match everywhere, but to me, at least the basic they're all the same shape, they have the whatever rounded or square, you give them two panel choices and roof or no roof. And then they can decide their own electrical there, but the gas heater thing, this propane freestanding tank, I don't know that we want that. I, one, I don't think it's safe, but it's up to the fire marshal, but you know, whether you have the tall panel like blue line with the flame or you have some other design for the heaters, um I think that's where the customization is, but so I'd like us to at least say yay on everybody has round corners or no, everybody can have both. And then this, whether you have that super thick roof with the louvers or just a solid, maybe it's not as thin as the picture, but I think to me, those are where we should be trying to be consistent, to have this streetscape, to have this master plan, so I'd like to hear what the basic things that should be the same versus what can be customized.
Vice Mayor, do you have a?
I'm willing to make a motion, but um well, maybe I should just make the motion rather than that.
Let me make a comment. So and I'm agreeing with Councilman Landry, some general design parameters that allow maximum flexibility and then frankly, safety issues, that's what the fire marshal is for, so fire marshal, I'm I'm glad you said basically every combination we could think of, the fire marshal blessed, so why should that be our concern? Um, perhaps, you know, I I I'm I'm a little hesitant on ARPA funds only because I'd like to get an update and see what we can afford, but let's just, let me just throw something out as a compromise, um we know there's a limited, we we've targeted sixteen, so that's that's the limit, right, so sixteen is the limit, we know we have eight or nine that expressed interest under under what we proposed to be the current conditions. Um, perhaps if we're using ARPA funds, we could do something like the first ten were at thirty thousand, that's three hundred thousand dollars. The next six, should we want to max it out or down to twenty or fifteen or something like that? You bring the total around four hundred thousand dollars, it runs either at fifteen, it's three ninety, at twenty, it's four twenty for the six, and that's a compromise. Ass- assuming assuming I hear from finance that um and or city manager that that's doable and it's not going to cost us something that we're counting on, but um they make a comment.
Speak to that, so.
Be a compromise, I've heard higher numbers, I've heard Councilmember Lopez saying he's comfortable moving in that range, so that's just a thought.
Yeah, just to sort of put it in perspective, this year when we did our adopted budget, um we used seven hundred and twenty five thousand uh dollars um to sup- support our budget from ARPA funds. And um an additional fifty thousand for COVID related expenses, it left us with a fund balance for ARP of four point six million. Um, but also want to remind you that uh taken out of that four point six million was another six hundred and eighty thousand, the council's RA approved that isn't deducted from that amount yet for future um O-BAG grants, that was our matching for O-BAG grants, that'll be programmed into the two thousand twenty four operating budget out of uh the ARPA funds. So taking all of that into consideration, your remaining fund balance would be three point nine million dollars.
Okay, so so my suggestion would be something I just said now, I I'm 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 cognizant of and I respect that some some restaurants just couldn't afford it, without this, they just couldn't afford it, they're not in that initial ones, but I'm also respecting the ones that want to step up and do it regardless, so public um community development would have to figure out, you know, who are these ten if we did it that way, we know, we know we have, I think we have nine identified, and that's why I wanted to get off the anonymous responses and get down to individuals, but perhaps ten at thirty and six at twenty or so, it's four twenty and it still leaves us three plus million dollars, so it's just just maybe a compromise between what I've heard here as far as the high end and and the low end.
You do numbers better than I do, okay, slow down.
Some suggesting maybe.
Doing a tier.
Maybe doing a tier saying we have, let's say roughly ten that have stepped up and said we want to do this.
And give them thirty.
Want to do this and we should help them get there as quickly as possible and respect that they're stepping up to do that, and and the number I threw out was thirty. We talked about a limit and a cap, well, we know, we know we've capped it before at sixteen max from a from a spacing standpoint, that would leave six more. Um, I think there should be an incentive or or some benefit for the people that have stepped up and are ready to do it today anyway. And um I suggested fifteen or twenty thousand for the next six that may want to come in because they see the others doing it. So ten at thirty thousand is three hundred. Six at fifteen is ninety, six at twenty is one twenty, so now you're in the three hundred ninety to four hundred twenty total cost. If we got all sixteen or everybody, if everybody came in.
But they did not ask the question to people of I mean, you got ten who will commit to the seventy seventy five. The other ones, if you had told them you're getting thirty thousand dollars, they might have said yes, so that's.
So two things, sorry, just to help the discussion, so the prevailing wage um adds about thirty five percent to construction costs. Uh, these costs are fluctuating, they're going between seventy five thousand and a hundred thousand are we'd say a safe zone to make the grant worth it, if you're paying thirty five percent, would have a floor at least of thirty five thousand dollars per grant. Otherwise, you're paying a grant out to which they'll have no financial benefit, so to make to make a real financial benefit, you'd have to set at least a thirty five thousand dollar grant.
That was going to be my next point is the prevailing wage adds about thirty thirty five percent. I I would think that some of those businesses, if you knew you were getting that, may want to move forward, so we're not limited to the ten. Leslie, looks like she wants to say something.
Well, we, I mean, we did ask a second question, so first question is no grant from the city, are you in at these costs? And we got the numbers, we did ask a second question. What what would be your floor to come in if your if your answer is no, we got some varying answers. Um, I'm remembering if if the cost was reduced somewhere to the thirty to fifty thousand dollar range, uh you'd get maybe four or five more businesses coming in. So again, you the doing the math in my head, you you'd have to have grants, you know, somewhere up fifty fifty thousand dollars to probably bring in a number more businesses at those estimates.
You're saying twenty five twenty five to thirty five is not going to raise the.
Actually would be a detriment, I mean, if you're hitting a twenty five thousand dollar grant and it's a thirty five percent uh added premium on your construction, i- it actually there there will be no fiscal benefit to the, I mean, no financial benefit to the 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 restaurant.
But it's thirty five, it's, let me ask you, then it's thirty five, then a wash?
Yeah, I mean, thirty five would be the floor, if if you're doing a hundred thousand dollar parklet, that's what the roof, the the whole nine yards. Uh, thirty five thousand dollar grant and a thirty five percent prevailing wage is a wash. Uh, if it's at the low end, then you're you're getting some like financial benefit, so again, the the grant does have to be at minimum thirty five and to have a real benefit, you'd you'd have to go up to forty forty five thousand.
Thirty five is a wash, everyone, what's, that's not really a benefit, it's not a detriment. It doesn't, it's not a negative.
I'll I'll just say a couple things, I I I think it's artificially limiting the discussion a little bit respectfully to to say every decision has to be determined by prevailing wage to some extent, I I I think that that that's that's not within the city's control, it's not something that the city's imposing, and I I think there's some amount of variability at at the based off the numbers that were just cited, just doing some quick back of the envelope math. At seventy five thousand, there would be a clear benefit if we did thirty thousand for for the ten businesses, so I I don't think it's so clear cut that there's this absolute minimum floor or or else there's there's no benefit. And and I I I just, I I think it makes a strong statement about the the support for for the businesses that what will have will have other benefits, so I I just, I I don't want us to to hear that and say, well, then we we can't do do any kind of grant, I I I think that's a limited way of looking at at the issue. And it assumes a lot about what the final cost will be, when just before we were saying, well, there's going to be some some variation, um and and there's a range. That's all.
Vice Mayor.
So I appreciate the discussion on on the use of the ARPA funds and um I'm I'm a bit surprised that the discussion went this way this evening because all along we've been uh operating under the premise that um the the plant, the the parklet program was um without the grants, uh we weren't going to be able to do that, and um the direction to staff was to go back to the restaurants and determine how many would be interested in or commit to to the the parklet program that was proposed, and we have eight and it sounds like nine that are willing to commit to to what was has been on the table, and um for me, I I just think that that's the direction we should be going, I um I'm not comfortable with discussion of the ARPA funds without having um m- more detailed information. I think that realistically, it's going to amount to probably forty five or fifty thousand dollars per per restaurant to to make it feasible, and I think that's um a considerable amount of money to be to be investing in I and I know that it it benefits the city as a whole, but again, I feel feel that the businesses are have committed to this and that we should move forward with the eight that we have under the premise that um we we have a parklet program and we're going to be providing a a small amount of um reduction in 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 um application fee, and it sounds like um some additional money now up to two percent based on the on the total amount of their parklet.
Councilwoman Givens?
Uh, so um I certainly appreciate where the vice mayor is coming from. I'm basically was stuck two weeks ago with where we were going, and I think I was um clear that I had a problem having the discussion focused on uh prevailing wage, I just felt that that was just out of the ballpark of of being relevant um for a city decision. Uh, so um I did a little more research, um I went to the other cities and um I confirmed that you know, um Los Gatos had in fact uh contributed funds, so um frankly, it opened doors for me, that made me feel better about the discussion tonight than picking up where we had left off last week, so that's why I did what I did in bringing that topic up. I do think um that we do need to have a cap, I totally agree with that, if we're going to do this uh with with some um ARPA funds, I do think there needs to be a cap. I'm a- almost inclined to um do things like my variation on what the mayor was suggesting is, I'm fine picking a cap of, I'm just saying four hundred, five hundred, I'll say five hundred thousand, and if it gets divided by ten or sixteen, whoever applies applies, gets it and splits it, and it's the same for everybody, and that's the end of it. I would leave the fee at fifteen hundred dollars then, because that's a buy-in and a commitment for them to do that. But I would go, sorry, I would go along with uh most of the recommended recommended actions. And I would make some comments about the parklet design for concurrence, but that's where I'm coming from, I just I I think let me put, last time I made a comment, what's the minimum number? You know, is it three, is it five? And I really was expecting to say tonight, um three is not enough to do this. Five is probably the minimum, I'm delighted that we've got eight or nine, because then you're starting to create, reinvigorate the downtown. And I I appreciate very much what um Councilmember Lopez said. Uh, and I'm sometimes not uh thoughtful in expressing it, it is, the downtown is our community, it is what Campbell identifies with, it is what we need to support and reinforce for the future. The city government has invested lots of money over the years. Um, and we've been very flexible in trying to help businesses come in. And we're doing a lot of things because the identity of our community is so tied with our downtown. So I think the statement that it isn't directly for individual businesses, it is for the community as a whole. Um, and I do think the other comment is prevailing wage supports our community members. So I think it's it's a bigger issue than that. So um that's why I'm where I am.
Can I ask the lawyer question again to Bill? At the bottom of the recommended action. It says that the city manager should execute a contract amendment ba ba ba, up to three thousand dollars per parklet, doesn't that go against this two percent? Because it's to customize each one, that goes against the two percent, right?
That would apply to the two percent if it's uh design modifications for a specific parklet, correct.
So just by doing the recommended action, you are making them pay prevailing wage, I think that's the point I'm trying to make. So so this okay. Two thou- what was it, a thousand five hundred?
Yeah, well, I'll put it, there's two options tonight, one is to go with the what was staff recommendation, come up with the original one. That the language you're looking at would be adjusted, right now it says not to exceed three thousand. Based on what we discussed tonight and the feedback from the city attorney would say not to exceed two percent of the construction cost, under those parameters, there would be no grant. That the city would pay for up to two percent and would the 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 fees would be reduced, but there would be no grant, that's option one. And again, just clarifying that that language we could adjust in the resolution. Option two is if the council would like to pursue grants, of course, that's not before you tonight, you'd have to direct staff to come back with that. Uh, we'd have to, based on the parameters you said, see a cap and a number, we'd have to frame that out and bring it back to you. I I will add, there are a couple of, a couple I, I will add, there are a couple of, a couple of additional hopes this year would have to go through for grants. There's a hearing that has to be conducted. It would add some more time to the process about, probably about two to three months. I'm getting told from our economic development manager on some mechanics who would have to go through a grant program. But again, just to reframe, option one is to, to not have a grant. We would adjust that language. It would be a max of two percent for the customization. A grant we would have to come back to you based on some broad parameters you'd set tonight. And, and again, it would probably put about two to three more months in the, in the process to set the program.
So pre, the question, let me ask councilmember Gibbons, I would just want to clarify what you said. I think so. If we took, for example, let's just for the sake of, because I ran these numbers, four hundred thousand.
Yeah.
If we had ten people that came in, you're saying they each get forty. We had sixteen come in, they each get twenty-five. Works out very evenly. It infers two things that there is a time limit and a deadline. Three things, that's one. We're never going to get more than sixteen, but I don't think from your conversations, that's a risk really right now. And then I would infer that you have to put a cap on it because if you got five, you weren't intending to give them eighty.
Right, that's fine.
So, so you're saying, for example, in that case, it's four hundred thousand, it's a pool of anywhere from one to sixteen to take it, but you're capping that nobody gets more than forty and
Yes, precisely.
but everybody gets a minimum of twenty-five.
Precis, precisely.
Okay, it's, it's so it's, I mean, it's a good, it's an interesting compromise. Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, I, you, you, you covered a lot of it, which is, I, I mean, I'm, I'm open to that idea and I appreciate the suggestion. My, my suggestion was going to be, I, I, I think we should set some, you know, put, put the idea forward for consideration. I'd be comfortable setting the cap and then knowing that staff has to come back, letting them ha, have the recommendation, given the feasibility of administrating it if there's other considerations. But that's just a general thought. I, I have no problem with, with the structure that, that, that's been proposed or, or discussed. And, and I, I do know there would be some, some additional steps required. The report did a really good job of laying that out and, and some paperwork for that matter on the part of the businesses. I, I, I do think it would be worth, you know, the extra hurdles to jump through if, if we could do that.
So.
So, so, so let me just throw out, I mean, I, if, if, I mean, at, at four hundred, which is, I'm more comfortable certainly at five hundred. It's, I'm, I'm talking about then a cap of sixteen, a time limit, whatever that is, and a, and an individual cap of forty max. So it's twenty-five to forty essentially, depending on how many come in. I, I, I'm a little nervous. I mean, I, I'm less nervous with the city manager explaining the funds and what we have. So I'm, I'm less nervous, but I'm probably closer to four than going higher.
Okay, again, numbers go over my head. So you said four hundred cap on the total program.
So I'm using the model that councilmember Gibbons came up with. I took four hundred as the cap.
Right, so you used four hundred as the cap total?
If sixteen people took, businesses took us up, that comes out to twenty-five. It's just even twenty-five thousand. It's the max we can spend.
Per, per parklet?
For, well, four hundred thousand total. So the max we could spend is four hundred. The, if we have a fully, a subscribed program, it's twenty-five thousand each. If only ten came in, they would split the same forty and get four hundred and forty. I added on just to qualifiers that there has to be a, certainly a hard deadline.
Deadline.
And there has to be a cap because if you had two, you're not offering two hundred thousand apiece.
I agree.
So, so basically you're, you're putting up four hundred thousand dollars for up to sixteen businesses to share in somewhere between a minimum of twenty-five thousand and a maximum of, of forty thousand.
And why four hundred, not five hundred?
That happened to be my comfort level.
His compromising number.
It, it, it's a comfort level and I know it's well, well beyond, it's well beyond the comfort level, vice mayor. So it's not, it's not that it's right. It's, it's that, it's that, um.
What's the sixteen into the five hundred? What would that be per you?
It's an odd number. I could, I just did the other ones with my hand.
It's more than twenty-five, right?
Let me, let me, if I may interrupt through the chair and just so we say, I'm fine with four hundred thousand.
Five hundred over sixteen is thirty-one and a quarter. I mean, I, I just think it's a lot. I, I'm, I'm comfortable at four hundred. I mean, I, I, I wasn't, didn't come in here comfortable using ARPA funds at all. With the city manager's explanation, I'm willing to do it. I think it's a benefit to the city.
I, I'd go back to what Rob said though, and what we've been talking about is it's about thirty-five percent to pay prevailing wage. And so if they got the grant, they'd have to pay prevailing wage or there's not really a benefit to them.
But if I may, I actually think in one sense, there, it may or may not be a financial benefit. We don't, we don't know until the numbers come in. But even if quote unquote, there isn't, that, that, we know we have eight or nine that are committed to doing it. We might get a couple more that would be committed to doing it, which is really going to create the environment downtown that we want. The more that participate, the better. So I'm looking at that as a motivation. Um, one, one thought I had, I mentioned briefly is that in Morgan Hill, you don't have to build the canopies. So that would save money. If somebody wants to do a parklet but not do the canopy, they could do that.
The seventy-five thousand is without the canopy.
The seventy-five thousand?
The hundred is with the canopy.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're still talking the baseline with no roof at seventy-five.
I apologize. I didn't understand that. I, I find that very difficult to, to compute, but so be it.
Trying, trying to move us along.
I, I would be willing to make a motion.
What, what I was going to say, because this is a long word emotion. Can we se- separate out the design elements? Because that's not written in the motion here.
It actually is. It says to incorporate preferred parklet designs. There is a phrasing in there. So I was going to elaborate on that.
But what is the design is what I'm trying to get to.
Let me make the motion.
Well, okay.
Why don't you try?
I'll try. And see if this, I'm keeping myself on track here. That the city council introduced an ordinance amending chapter eleven fifteen parklets in the public right of way of the Campbell municipal code to remove the requirements for the security deposit. Adopt a resolution approving amendments to the semi parklet program guide to incorporate preferred parklet designs. And I'll come back and fill that in. And removing references to the requirement for a security deposit. Adopt a resolution approving amendment to the city's master fee schedule to, now. And we do not change the city's master fee schedule and leave the parklet permit application fee at fifteen hundred. Deferring the effective date of the annual parklet completion fee, verification fee to FY twenty twenty-four. Removing security deposits related to the parklets in the public right of way and approving associated budget adjustments for twenty twenty-three, which would be setting a four hundred thousand dollar allocation of ARPA funds for the park, semi-permanent parklet program support for up to sixteen businesses with a minimum grant of twenty-five thousand and a maximum grant of forty thousand. And adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendment with the parklet design consultant, which would be the same Sid, Sidwell Park Ravan Architects to provide the customization of up to sixteen parklets at a cost not to, not to exceed, I think that's.
Should say exceed, exceed is missing.
Exceed three thousand per parklet, four, forty-eight thousand total. And approving associated budget adjustments for FY twenty twenty-three. And then the preferred parklet design elements would be, there seems to be consensus on both options. There's, I would support the curved corners. I do think that has a nice feature going down. I'm flexible. I will say that no taller than ten feet, no less than eight feet for the canopies. That the canopies be solid. What else do I need to put?
The panels?
The pan, the panels can be, I, their choice. There's, there's two choices, two designs.
And did you say the rounded corner?
I, I, I prefer the rounded corners. I'll put that in. Well, I'm, that's, that's subject to comment. Have I covered everything?
I, I think you have. Is there a second at least for discussion?
A second for discussion?
My, my, if I can, my only comment would be to get less specific on the designs, I guess, because I want some flexibility and it's aesthetics, whether you like a corner or not, a corner, a curve. I, I, I don't know. I, I, I guess I don't want to tie it down.
I'm, I, I, it doesn't surprise me that you say that.
What kind of, what kind of, what kind of canopy we got? I just, I just kind of.
I love the canopy flexible. I love this, the railing flexible. It is, it, it can be either way. I, I, I don't think that they should all be the same. And that's really why I made that one stipulation. I think they, to comp, to be a compliment in a, an entire four or five block area. They should have something common. And I think the.
Yeah, I just look at them all as enhanced designs. They're not all next to each other. They're spread out. So some variation is not bad to me.
Okay, I, I'm willing to back off of that if that's preferred by everybody.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Lopez?
I, I, I appreciate your flexibility there and openness. I, just because I had a comment on the design that I, I'm just going to dwell on that for a second. I, I personally like the rounded corner. I don't, I don't want you to think I was ignoring your, your feedback because I, I did want to say something. I personally prefer the rounded corners as well. But I'm going to fall, I'm going to err on the side of flexibility, concur with the mayor. Partly for, for that particular element because one of the, the points of feedback that came back in the survey was the square footage. And when we have rounded corners, that really starts to impact that. So if that's going to be a major consideration for one of the businesses, I, I, I defer on the side of flexibility there. One question, maybe for, for staff, councilmember Gibbons, you said up to sixteen businesses?
That's the previously, the staff previously analyzed downtown and identified.
No, I, I understand. In the motion, uh, the recommended action, it's sixteen parklets. And I understand the intent. I just want to know if there's a functional difference there in terms of how that would redesign.
I'm not sure. I'm sorry, there's sixteen parklets?
Sixteen parklets versus sixteen businesses in the motion. Does that make a difference?
Did I say businesses?
Yeah.
Beg pardon. Sixteen parklets. Thank you.
Okay. If, if that's clear, just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Landry?
I understand the concern of the rounded corners and the internal space, but you're going to have this big blocky two-foot footing that's concrete. I just think if every, you have a lot of variation internally, but this pointed corners versus rounded corners is going to be an obvious thing down the street. Yes, they're spaced far apart, but it's only five blocks. That either we go rounded corners or not rounded corners. And if the concern is internal space, then square them all off. But I, I do think from an aesthetic standpoint, as you're driving down the street, you will notice the difference. And if everything else is different, then there's not kind of this cohesiveness to the program. Like I said, a streetscape, a master plan. So I would, I would like to say either rounded or not rounded. And then everything else in the motion I, is fine. You get to customize your roof. You get to customize your heater. You get to customize your panels, your internal circulation.
I would only offer hindsight, a rounded corner might make it easier to pull out of the parking space.
I forgot to bring that up. It'll be easier to pull out. You can see around the corner better.
I, I, I just want to say, if you look at the design, the, it still has the concrete going out to the corners, even with the rounded design. So the footprint is still the same. No, externally, it still has, they, they, they both take up the same amount of space.
I think we're splitting too many hairs at this point.
The reality is for me, the, there's no consistency in the buildings and the signage in the parklets that we have today, other than the concrete, which is ugly. So I would just, for me to support, I'll leave it flexible because what we should not impose. Five people have different ideas of aesthetics. We shouldn't impose it on people.
And may I offer one clar, additional clarification in the motion, which is asking staff, do we need to ask staff to come back with the program and the dates required to implement the program for offering grants?
We need a deadline from community development for sure.
We, we will have to come back.
Okay. Do I need to put that in the motion or is that?
I, yeah, and I, I was going to suggest probably we want to reclarify that motion because I think it was really clear until we got to the modifications on the design cost. And we started to have a conversation as part of that motion. So it was really clear that, that essentially moving the staff recommendation, modifying the permit application back to the fifteen hundred dollars originally, not reducing it to five hundred. And we've tracked down in that with the design modification with the architect not to exceed three thousand dollars per parklet. You did add the discussion about up to sixteen parklets for a grant of not to exceed four hundred thousand with a cap of forty thousand dollars per parklet and a minimum of twenty-five thousand dollars per parklet. That all was clear.
Okay. And I think I also read the initial statements would said to remove the requirement for a security deposit.
Correct.
Adopt the resolution approving amendments to the semi-permanent parklet program guide to incorporate. And that's what you have a little confusion on.
Let me ask you, what wasn't clear?
So that's all clear. Now what's not clear is if we're going to modify the design and give directions on the design approval. And that's where we started at the discussion.
We just, we did that. That was in the motion. The only thing that was remaining in the motion was the discussion of curve or rectangular. And I think we've all agreed that it's flexible. It can be either.
So you're removing, you're, you're, you're suggesting in your motion to remove that?
I'm suggesting I will revise my motion.
Okay, thank you.
To be either, either corner, square or round?
To let them choose.
Is, is the comment about the height still, is staff clear on that? Which I support, but I, is that remaining?
To me, that the height can be any, between eight and ten feet.
Yeah, and was that clear?
That's cool.
Okay.
So we.
I, I, you know, we're, we want, we want to move this forward in a positive way. So I'm trying to be as flexible.
So the only change is remove, removing the design considerations or design specifications of rounded?
Yes, in my original motion, yes.
From the original motion, I think councilwoman Landry seconded it. Is that right? It's been a while. Would you accept that? Don't accept that, we'll see.
It's up to you. I understand.
Probably.
I feel pretty strongly that, that everything else can be custom, but that we either do square or round. So if that stays in the motion, I take my second back because I think it should be one or the other.
Okay, let me ask. I know, I know where the vice mayor stands. Councilmember Lopez, did you want to second it with the change?
I will second.
I would just offer, I totally, completely and absolutely agree with councilwoman Landry, but we've got to move this forward.
Let's see where we are. Can we get a roll call vote?
Quick, quick question. Are we keeping the ceilings no taller than ten feet or are we no taller than?
No taller than is fine.
So eight to ten feet?
At, at their discretion.
Okay. Councilmember Gibbons?
I. Quick question though. Sergio was leaning towards the rounded corners, so I.
He seconded the motion as is, so we're going to take.
Okay, I just, because she said she changed it because she didn't think she had the votes.
Well, we're going to find out. Please continue.
Okay. Councilmember Lopez?
I.
Councilwoman Landry?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
No.
Mayor Rosica?
Hi, okay. That passes. Thank you very much. We go to new business, item ten, potential reach code updates to be considered with the adoption of the two thousand and three new building code and authorization to initiate a zoning code text amendment to CMC twenty-one eighteen, parking and loading to comply with recent amendments to state law. Did you want, did everyone want to take a? Let's take, let's take, let's take ten minutes to nine forty-five on the dot.
Actually, can I read the title of the ordinance?
You can.
Thank you. One second.
One second. Being an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Campbell, amending chapter 11.15, parklets in the public right-of-way to the Campbell Municipal Code, CMC, file number PLN 2022-39.
Move further reading?
Second.
Motion second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Gibbons?
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez?
Hi.
Councilwoman Landry?
and authorization to initiate a zoning code text amendment to CMC 21.18, parking and loading to comply with recent amendments to state law.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Hi.
Mayor Resnikov?
Hi. So apologize for cutting you off there, and then we'll bring it back to 10 in nine minutes. Thank you. You're on it.
Good evening again, council. Robbie Stuntsey, community development director. I'm going to give a very brief presentation, a very high level. In addition, myself, I've got some other folks with me. If you have more detailed questions, senior planner Stephen Rose, acting building official Bob Lennon. We also have with us from Silicon Valley Clean Energy, Anthony Ulo as a resource. But I'll go ahead and frame the options before council tonight. So every three years, the state goes through a building code update. This building code update is the 2022 building code. It will become effective in January 1 of next year. Through every three-year cycle update, any local jurisdiction can make local amendments to that building code based on local conditions. At this point, we do have some amendments we've identified, both from the fire district and our building, acting building official. Some small minor amendments we are proposing and will bring back to you at the right time. The real discussion tonight is not adoption of the 2022 building code and those small amendments, but really should Campbell consider an amendment to its reach code. And we talked about reach code. It can mean a lot of things. It's basically going above and beyond the codes that are required. Often, that term is used to a higher level of green building, sustainability, electric and energy codes is often what's used with reach code. So the discussion here tonight is what, what direction should we go on looking at our reach codes and unfolding that into the three-year cycle update? Just to frame it today, in 2019, the council had adopted its existing reach code. Under that reach code, for single-family residential construction, most single-family residences, you do require all heating and cooling to be electrified. It doesn't, there was two exemptions to that, and single-family homes does not include cooking, and it doesn't include outdoors, such as pools. There were two points in the staff report I want to clarify tonight. Unfortunately, when I finished the staff report, I hadn't had a full conversation with our acting building official. So putting a clarification in the record. Number one, we do apply the reach code today to ADUs. They are recognized as a residence, so I just want to make sure that's clear in the record. Number two, Campbell has.
Would you repeat number one again, please?
Absolutely. So we apply the, the reach code today to single-family residences, and that includes ADUs, accessory dwelling units. So I want to make sure that's clear in the record, because that, it's a little differently worded in the staff report. So apologize for that. I want to make sure that's clear.
May I ask for additional clarity? Sorry. And this slide shows all heating and cooling. It also should include hot water.
I said that holistically, but yes, both the water and the heating cooling of your house. Two, I want to clarify, Campbell has a differentiation in its code. When you do a remodel at a certain point, when do new requirements kick in? And every jurisdiction has this threshold, the jurisdiction I was in called a rebuild. Here, it's called new dwelling using portions of existing structure. So if you're tearing down enough walls, if you're moving enough framing, you cross that threshold, we qualify it as a new dwelling using portions of existing structure. If you cross that threshold today, the reach code does apply. So those are two points in the report, worded a little differently. I had to get clarification from a building official, but again, I want to make clear on the record the reach code today applies in both those instances. So today, before council, providing three options, staff has identified for reach codes going forward. So one is a step back, and I remind the council, as part of your strategy session, beginning of the year, you identified a couple of areas to look at. One of them was sustainability. You've put on the Broadwork Plan, identified to do adoption of a climate action plan, 2023. So, so taking that all into consideration, looking at broader sustainability goals. If the intent is to adopt a reach code that hits those broader green building sustainability codes, the option to go with would be to go after some of its broader, such as CalGreen Tier 1 or 2. So CalGreen Tier 1 or 2 has been on the books for a few years. There are mandatory requirements, and then there are tiers, which are higher requirements. It was adopted some years back as a replacement for LEED, and I can't remember, BuildItGreen were sort of nonprofit options, but it's, it's adopted by the state as higher thresholds. And it has a couple of categories, power, water, waste, construction materials, all holistically to have more sustainability in building. We are not aware of any local city that has adopted straight out required Tier 1 and Tier 2 requirements for all new structures. I think some cities have taken portions of CalGreen and higher standards, but we're not aware of benchmarking with other cities, and the other city has adopted those Tier 1 and 2 thresholds as mandatory. With that, again, if, if the council's direction is to be more holistic, look at sustainability, this is a direction we could go to. I would note that given it's a bit new, and there's not, not a lot of easy data to rely on, we would have to do a bit more stakeholder outreach, a bit more research. We think the time needed to do that would not sync with this building code adoption. We would have to decouple that, and that would probably come back in the spring of next year. But that is an option for a more holistic look at just sustainability and green building. Option two, and this is more of the vein that was looked at in 2019, is just to look at electrification, the energy types in buildings. Silicon Valley Clean Energy, to which Campbell was a part of as a JPA, has offered with other community choice aggregates in the Bay Area, the Bay Area Model Reach Code, which generally is an electrification reach code. The council, in considering this, may consider adopting that wholesale for all new construction in our types, or may consider taking out certain exceptions. Staff has done some research into this. Based on initial research, we've identified certain areas where there might be pain points, more stakeholder outreach unknown. We have recommended, if the council is to go in this direction, just based on initial research and unknowns, that two areas not be included. That would be, one, industrial processes. We're not sure to what extent there might be natural gas needed in some of the industrial processes, perhaps in our Dell area. Some of those areas were just, just unknowns, where you need natural gas. And two, with restaurants, we knew that the need for controlled, high, high-volume gas cooking is still high need with a lot of restaurants. So in those two areas, we would recommend not to include those going forward at this time. We would recommend everything that, including all non-residential, which would be commercial, and including all residential, which would be multifamily, single-family, and actually including cooking. We've seen that both cost effectiveness and the effect of cooking on stoves and the residential setting is, is very similar with the induction ovens, the induction coating, cooking to also gas. Final option three, if the council desires not to pursue both, we'll of course be due to this, go with the codes as is, maintain your existing reach codes. They do not expire. Again, staff would come back with some minor amendments coming from the fire district and the building official, but nothing on reach codes related to sustainability and energy. Next steps, based on the direction, we'll return you regardless with the building code adoption. We're targeting a November date to come back to you. Again, if the directions go forward with, they're probably option two or three, we could bundle this all together in one adoption. If the, the option is to go with option one, or something that requires a lot more research, we would decouple the reach code adoption from the normal 2022 building code adoption and bring that back later, just in terms of timeframe, because we would need to do research and outreach. With that, I'll close up and be available for questions. Thanks.
Questions for, Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you so much. I'm really glad we're having this discussion. Could you go back to the option one slide? I have a two-part question to start with. Thank you. One, and I know we also have Anthony from Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Thank you for, for being here. Rob, if you're not sure, I'd wonder if, you know, if Anthony might know. You mentioned that no city in the region has adopted the comprehensive Tier 1 standards. Some of them have adopted some of the other ones. I'm curious in particular about water conservation, even if it's, if it's a part of them. And so do you know specifically of cities in the region that have adopted the water conservation standards?
I don't. I've heard anecdotally Saratoga might have adopted persons this or others, but I honestly don't, don't have that research. We would have to.
Anthony, do you know any, any more on that?
As we're discussing, we have to lower that a lot. As we're discussing specifically the Tier 1 and Tier 2, the additional, I know that Saratoga, their council has directed their building official to adopt part of Valley Water's proposed reach code. Not that, not, it's not based on CalGreen.
Okay.
But, but a reach code essentially in the.
Okay, we're back. Then now we'll go to new business item 10, potential reach code updates be considered with the adoption of the 2022 building code. And authorization to initiate a zoning code text amendment to CMC 21. Dot 18 parking and loading to comply with recent amendments to state law. You're on it.
Good evening again, council. Robbie Stuntsey, community director, I'm gonna give a very brief presentation, a very high level. In addition, myself, I got some other folks with me. If you have more detailed questions, senior planner Stephen Rose, acting bill official Bob Lennon. We also have with us from Silicon Valley Clean Energy, Anthony Yulo as a resource. But I'll go ahead and frame the options before council tonight. So every three years, the state goes through a building code update. This building code update is the 2022 building code. It will become effective in January 1st of next year. Through every three year cycle update, any local jurisdiction can make local amendments to that building code based on local conditions. At this point, we do have some amendments we've identified both from the fire district and our building acting bill official. Some small minor amendments we are proposing and we'll bring back to you at the right time. The real discussions tonight is not adoption of the 2022 building code and those small amendments, but really should Campbell consider an amendment to its reach code? And we talked about reach code. It can mean a lot of things. It's basically going above and beyond the codes that are required. Often that term is used to a higher level of green buildings, sustainability, electric and energy codes is often what's used with reach code. So the discussion here tonight is at what what direction should we go on looking at our reach codes and then folding that into the three year cycle update? Just to frame it today, in 2019, the council had adopted its existing reach code. Under that reach code for single family residential construction, most single family residences, you do require all heating and cooling to be electrified. It doesn't, there was two exemptions to that in single family homes does not include cooking. And it doesn't include outdoors such as pools. There were two points in the staff report I want to clarify tonight. Unfortunately, when I finished the staff report, I hadn't had a full conversation with their acting billing official. So putting a clarification in the record. Number one, we do apply the reach code today to ADUs. They are recognized as a residence. So I just want to make sure that's clear in the record. Number two, Campbell has
Would you repeat number one again, please?
Absolutely. So we apply the the reach code today to single family residences and that includes ADUs and accessory dwelling units. So I want to make sure that's clear in the record because that it's a little differently worded than the staff report. So apologize for that. I want to make sure that's clear.
May I ask for additional clarity? Sorry. And this slide shows all heating and cooling. It also should include hot water.
I said that holistically, but yes, both the water and the heating cooling of your house. Two, I want to clarify Campbell has a differentiation in its code. When you do a remodel at a certain point, when do new requirements kick in? And every jurisdiction has this threshold, the jurisdiction I was in called a rebuild. Here it's called new dwelling using portions of existing structure. So if you're tearing down enough walls, if you're moving enough framing, you cross that threshold, we qualify it as a new dwelling using portions of existing structure. If you cross that threshold today, the reach code does apply. So those are two points in the report worded a little differently. I had to get clarification for a bill official, but again, I want to make clear on the record. The reach code today applies in both those instances. So today, before council, providing three options, staff has identified for reach codes going forward. So what is the step back? And remind the council as part of your strategy session, beginning of the year, you identified a couple of areas to look at. One of them was sustainability. You've put on the broad work plan identified to do adoption of a climate action plan 2023. So so taking that all into consideration, looking at broader sustainability goals. If the intent is to adopt a reach code that hits those broader green building sustainability codes. The option to go with would be to go after some of its broader, such as Cal Green Tier 1 or 2. So Cal Green Tier 1 or 2 has been on the books for a few years. There are mandatory requirements and then there are tiers which are higher requirements. It was adopted some years back as a replacement for lead and I can't remember, Build It Green were sort of nonprofit options, but it's adopted by the state as higher thresholds. And it has a couple of categories, power, water, waste, construction materials, all holistically to have more sustainability in building. We are not aware of any local city that has adopted straight out required tier one and tier two requirements for all new structures. I think some cities have taken portions of Calgary and higher standards, but we're not aware benchmarking with other cities and another city has adopted those tier one and two thresholds as mandatory. With that, again, if the council's direction is to be more holistic, look at sustainability, this is a direction we could go to. I would note that given it's a bit new and there's not a lot of easy data to rely on. We would have to do a bit more stakeholder outreach, a bit more research. We think the time needed to do that would not sync with this building code adoption. We would have to decouple that. And that would probably come back in the spring of next year, but that is an option for more holistic look at just sustainability and green building. Option two, and this is more of the vein that was looked at in 2019, is just to look at electrification, the energy types in buildings. Silicon Valley Clean Energy, to which Campbell was a part of as a JPA, has offered with other community choice aggregates in the Bay Area, the Bay Area Model Reach Code, which generally is an electrification reach code. The council, in considering this, may consider adopting that wholesale for all new construction in our types, or may consider taking out certain exceptions. Staff has done some research into this. Based on initial research, we've identified certain areas where there might be pain points, more stakeholder outreach unknown. We have recommended if the council is to go in this direction, just based on initial research and unknowns that two areas not be included, that would be one industrial processes. We're not sure to what extent there might be natural gas needed in some of the industrial processes, perhaps in our Dell area or some of those areas were just just aren't unknowns where you need natural gas. And two, with restaurants, we knew that the need for controlled high, high volume gas cooking is still high need with a lot of restaurants. So in those two areas, we would recommend not to include those going forward at this time. We would recommend everything that including all non-residential, which would be commercial and including all residential, which would be multifamily, single family, and actually including cooking. We've seen that both cost effectiveness and the effect of cooking on stoves and the residential setting is very similar with the induction ovens, the induction coating, cooking to also gas. Final option three, the council desires not to pursue both, but of course, we do choose to go with the codes as is, maintain your existing reach codes that do not expire. Again, staff would come back with some minor amendments coming from the fire district and the bill official, but nothing on reach codes related to sustainability and energy. Next steps, based on your direction, we'll return to you regardless with the building code adoption. We're targeting a November date to come back to you. Again, if the directions go forward with, they have probably option two or three, we could bundle this all together in one adoption. If the the option is to go with option one or something that requires a lot more research, we would decouple the reach code adoption from the normal 2022 building code adoption and bring that back later, just in terms of timeframe, because we would need to do research and outreach. With that, I'll close up and be available for questions. Thanks.
Questions for Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you so much. I'm really glad we're having this discussion. Could you go back to the option one slide? I have a two part question to start with. Thank you. One, and I know we also have Anthony from Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Thank you for being here. Rob, if you're not sure, I'd wonder if, you know, if Anthony you might know. You mentioned that no city in the region has adopted the comprehensive tier one standards. Some of them have adopted some of the other ones. I'm curious in particular about water conservation, even if it's if it's a part of them. And so do you know specifically of cities in the region that have adopted the water conservation standards?
I don't. I've heard anecdotally Saratoga might have adopted persons this or others, but I honestly don't don't have that research. We would have to
Anthony, do you know any anymore on that?
As we're discussing, we have to lower that a lot. As we're discussing specifically the tier one and tier two, the additional, I know that Saratoga, their council has directed their building official to adopt part of Valley Water's proposed reach code. Not that, not, it's not based on Cal Green, but but a reach code essentially in the area of water and their building officials working on that now.
Thank you. So the second part of that for you, Rob, is that if we were to, if they're interested in pursuing a part, not not the comprehensive tier one or two, but one of them say water, would that be something and that could be done within the timeframe? If it's not the comprehensive and that require you to go and do all this research?
It's a good question. I have to confess, we don't have a lot of data points knowledge on the water standards and the stakeholders. I'd say in abundance of caution, just given competing workloads, that if we were to investigate into that, it would probably, we probably would have to decouple that, bring that back later.
Okay. And does that, have you looked at the, it's fine if not, but the Valley Water standards that were mentioned?
We have not.
Okay. Thank you. And then could you go to the next slide here, please? The staff recommendation in the report includes ADUs and pools and spas. I don't see that reflected here. Did that change or are you including them somewhere?
Again, my apologies. The clarification was today ADUs are subject to the reach code and our recommendation is they would continue. Pools and spas, good question. I think we're still doing more research. We'd like to defer that and bring that back. I'm not sure we have total research yet. The cost effectiveness and technology is there for the pools on electrification. So at this point, I think staff is bringing that open, continue the stakeholder outreach, get the data and cost effectiveness, and we would come back with the option of including those or not.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. That certainly makes me a lot more comfortable with what's on this slide versus what was in the report as a starting point. But all my questions there.
Councilmember Landry, questions?
Hi. So I gave everybody this copy of the what's Saratoga and talking to Tony, he said, this is the base Cal Green. What's in this Saratoga thing? Because they get into the paint and recycled materials and all that. So what is above the base? What would be in tier one or tier two, like just broad, general? Is this what you, water, energy efficient, water efficiency? But is there any little bit more, like Sergio brought up the water?
Yeah, I have to confess, I don't. I know in general that the efficiency standards go way up on say gallons per flush and sort of those standards and how much a house can use. I can't give you the data points, but I know as the higher we go up into tier one and two tier, then those standards just get much higher.
Okay. And then you mentioned pools and spas. And so in Los Gatos, if the, they have outdoor kitchens everywhere now. Everybody's doing them. They want gas. Where do they fall in this?
Good question. Yeah, at this point, and the existing ordinance says it applied outdoor. So we would, in addition to the pools, and we haven't done any research, and it's a good question on the outdoor heating component. I think we'd have to do more research into that. I think the data I've seen so far, it's a little hard to pencil out more for the pools. I think for outdoor heating, my sense is an electrification requirement. It is more cost effective, but I think we would put that in the same category of doing more research, stakeholder outreach and bringing that back.
Okay, so just if we say it doesn't apply to outdoors, just be thinking these outdoors fire rings and kitchens. And what Los Gatos has done is if the kitchen's under the eve or the overhang or an extended overhang, you can put in gas. But if it goes out past the footprint of the overhang, you can't put in gas.
Other questions? Councilmember Gibbons?
Thank you. The boundaries of this are a bit of a challenge. I'm trying to think on how to ask a question. So let me start with, I believe Campbell does already have water conservation standards that tie directly to the water district?
We do have what are called MOLO standards. That's Modern Water Efficiency Landscape Boarding Standards.
Okay, so it doesn't necessarily apply to appliances, but the state plumbing code does have constraints on. I'm thinking of flushing the 1.2 and 1. whatever. That's already in the plumbing code.
That's correct. And to speak to Councilwoman Landry's point, so in Cal Green, there are mandatory standards. And today in the 2019 code and both in the upcoming code, there are mandatory water efficiency standards that are required by the state.
Right. So a lot of this is automatically going up with this cycle and will continue to go. So that was the clarification I wanted to make. So let's see. And one other comment, question, let's see. I'll save, I won't ask the question. I'll save it for a comment. Thank you.
Rob, one question. You mentioned a couple of times about stakeholder outreach. So can you describe what the plan is? And is that, is that outreach to residential, to commercial? Is it just for the immediate options? Is it longer term impacts of of going beyond those options? What's planned and what timeframe?
Yeah, I think our, I mean, we've done a lot of outreach recently, general plan update, housing element. We have a pretty robust list of residents, even commercial stakeholders. I think we're, if you're going with the middle option. And again, we think there might be some pain points with restaurants and industrial processes. We don't know. But if it's going in that direction, we would use those outreach lists next door to reach out to residents, neighbors, and even our commercial stakeholders in the next month and just get, show what the codes are, where they're going. I've already had some few discussions with developers. Honestly, I've gotten initial feedback that most of them are willing to go electric. I was a bit surprised by that. But to answer your question, we would use the lists we have and add to it just to do outreach with both those groups of stakeholders.
But you're talking about doing outreach then based on, you said, what direction it's going. I thought you were going to more likely do outreach based on where people would like it to go.
Well, I mean, the reason we want to come here tonight is to get an initial council direction. So so we could focus what's presented to the committee and get their feedback. It's more of a sharpening down before we bring it back to you. So based on council direction tonight, that would, that would frame how we're approaching the ordinance and what we would show to stakeholders.
And that's to come back in November? There would be time to go do the outreach and to come back within, within a month, six weeks?
It's quick, but that's what we'll do.
Okay.
May I just a clarification? So the staff report, I think, has a specific option to recommendation. And my understanding was that we would focus perhaps the discussion on the council on option two with a little bit of tweaking here and there. I wasn't really expecting, maybe I should be more ambitious, that council would give direction for staff to pursue tier one and tier two. We don't, we, it's, I want to make sure based on what the mayor just asked. Tier one and tier two are separate from the recommendation that's in the staff report. It's, it's going above and beyond the recommendation in the staff report.
That's correct. You have three, I mean, staff is recommending, sorry to mix tier one and tier two, option one, two, three. So staff is recommending option two, which is on the screen. Another option, again, knowing sustainability was a high priority council, was the Cal Green options, tier one and two. We think that would take a lot, we couldn't be back to November 1st if you pursue that option. And we'll be back to it minimum in the spring. Our thought is, you know, we are moving into a climate action plan. It's going to have a lot of policies and programs that come out of that. If you ask staff, we'd recommend use the climate action plan as a way to holistically come back to where Campbell wants to go with with these Calgary tiers.
Thank you for that clarification. And Mr. Mayor, does that make more sense to you?
Yeah, I've just, it makes more sense. I mean, I guess we'll discuss the, it is confusing options and tiers, but we'll discuss the options. I'm not ceding to any option at this point, but we'll discuss the options, I guess, tonight. Yeah, that's fair. So any other questions before, okay, so let me open up the public hearing, see if anybody with public wishes to speak. You have two minutes. Did you want to make any? Okay, you're here to support. Thank you. Thank you, Anthony. We'll close. I don't see anybody on line, Madam Clerk. Is that correct? So we'll close the public hearing, bring it back for council discussion. Councilmember Landry, you were quick on the draw.
I used to play spit. Remember that card game? You had to put your hand down quick. I forgot to ask the question. On page, packet page 151, at the top, there's a chart with green, blue and yellow, orange, yellow. And it says natural gas moratorium, all electric ordinance and electric preferred ordinance. Are you going, is your staff recommendation of option two, the natural gas moratorium 100%? Not the, these three?
Well, I think, I think that's a different approach. Anthony, you might know a bit more. I think so. Those jurisdictions basically said no natural gas. Absolutely. As a, as a different approach to requiring electrification or not. To answer the question, what staff is recommending that option two, I think generally falls in the all electric with just some exceptions.
Not the electric preferred ordinance?
Correct. I mean, to, you know, to be clear, it's somewhere between those two.
Okay, so we're in the comments now.
Yeah.
Bigger philosophical question. If everything is electric and the power goes out, what happens? Nothing works. So I see Tony getting ready to jump up out of his chair. I mean, it's a reality. We've had brownouts and you know, if it's in the winter or whatever, but my, my concern and I support, I'm an environmentalist. I support everything we can do to help cut down on greenhouse gases, but my concern in going 100% all electric, which I is, I know that's not right now what we're talking, is we're putting all our eggs in one basket and we're limiting ourselves on the transition over a series of years. And that, I, can you bring up option two slide instead of option one?
Sorry, just one second.
I just want to make sure what we're, where to go. Okay. So in this recommendation for the higher electric efficiency standard that meets in Colin Blue, the all electric ordinance, which would be use the energy reach code, no new gas appliances or no new gas space or water heaters. But we already have passed the no new space heaters and no new water heaters. We've already passed that part. So the new addition is that no new gas appliances in residential buildings. That, that's the biggest difference to what your option two, correct?
Correct. The only exception now is cooking. So it would eliminate that exception.
Right.
In residences.
Okay, so I support option one, understanding that it's not going to happen right now. I think option two gets us to be able to, what do you call it? Certify the next round of the building code, the 2022 building code. But I think if our goal is sustainability, we need to be looking at higher level of Cal Green. And, and that's, I, I wasn't sure exactly the difference between what Saratoga has and the tier one, tier two. I mean, they get into the paint, they get into recycling the building materials, they get into like just everything, every category. It's not just water. It's not just energy. So I support option one at the bigger picture of with the climate action plan and coming back. I'm that one. And then the next back to option two. It's, you said no, we're no restriction on an outdoor. Right? That would be part of this alternative?
I think staff didn't have enough research data points there. We're going to research and bring back that to either include or not include when the ordinance comes back.
Okay, because spas are going electric is pretty much the, you buy the little model kit and you set it on the ground, you plug it in. So I would think when you came back in the spring that you'd be looking at outdoor. Like I said, Los Gatos has it if it's under the eve of the house or a covered overhang gas, but if you go out past there, no gas. So if you have a big outdoor kitchen, because those are a big deal right now in these outdoor fire tables, they're propane or gas. Does that get rid of propane or just natural pipe gas?
I think we would recommend both. If you're going to eliminate gas, you would eliminate both.
So is that in your option two?
Again, we, with respect to the outdoor option, our recommendations, do more research and come back. We don't, there's no strong recommendation at this point.
Okay, so that to me would be we come back with adding those areas, outdoor, the pools, the spas, the fire tables, and then looking at the tier one, tier two of the Cal Green. I am concerned that we're putting all our apples in one basket of going 100% electric, though.
Councilmember Lopez?
I have comments, but would it be all right to have Anthony address the point about all electric versus gas with that point specifically in the blackouts? I know it might be certainly a common one that I hear from residences as well.
Certainly. Thank you, councilmember. This is a common concern that is often communicated. But the reality is that almost nothing works without electricity. So when I worked in Morgan Hill, I had a resident say, hi, I love watching my clothes dry on work. In a power outage, I won't be able to watch that. Well, of course, your clothes dryer uses an electric motor to turn, even though it might use gas heat. Your heating in your house, of course, relies on electric motor to blow the air through modern water heaters rely on electric ignition and electric thermostats. So virtually nothing works in a modern house. And remember, we're just talking about new development in here without electricity. So while at first you think, oh, we're putting all our eggs in one basket, when you tease it through and look at what functions and what doesn't during a power outage, basically nothing works. Even many gas stoves now have a cutoff since they're electronic ignition and for safety reasons, without power, they won't even work with a match. So it really becomes a non-issue in a new house. Their power outages are not good in general, whether you have a mixed fuel house or an all electric house. Does that answer your question, councilmember?
And specifically for new construction, which might be different for, I know when I was growing up and we had a blackout, it was probably a little bit different. I, so I appreciate that. And I think it speaks the need for greater resiliency in the grid. That's probably that, you know, definitely outside the scope of the discussion, but but not to minimize the importance. My comments, I'll just try to lay out the, the broad parameters that I'm comfortable with. Really appreciate this coming up tonight. For, for the building codes process similarly, I'd like to move ahead with looking at option two for, for that process, given that the timing. Understanding that additional outreach and, and research needs to be done. I would really be interested in really delving into the restaurants. Just because what I hear when I talk to restaurant owners these days, that that may be different even from where the discussion was a few years ago. When, when, before I was on the council book, was following this discussion and this item was, was, was before the council. I, I kind of, kind of went the gamut from restaurant owner saying, you know, absolutely not, and you know, you put us out, other one saying, oh, actually it's, we love it. Or, you know, wouldn't be that big a deal. And so understanding that technology changes, I'd really want to delve into the latest on what that looks like to help us make an informed decision. Not for closing, going in either direction of that, but just wanting to have the best information. So that'd be my feedback. If we were to go to option two. And, and then I think it would be appropriate, knowing that we already have the, the climate action plan on the work plan and for, for future date, to look into some of the option one choices as, as part of that process. And in particular, I looked, I'm getting this from amendment, sorry, attachment B, that's in here, that lays out some of the example standards. So, so I'd love to get more information about what we currently have that lines up with Valley Water. My sense, and again, looking at attachment B was that there Um, my sense, and again, looking at attachment B was that there, there's probably things here that go beyond that. Um, so as I mentioned, I'm really interested particularly in looking at water conservation, just because. We're only going to see more and more droughts. Unfortunately, it's, it's just a, a reality. And so I, I think. That's where we, we have some of the biggest potential to make an, an impact, um, that, that's going to be positive for, for the whole community. Um, so really look at what, what's feasible there, especially when you look at where the majority. Um, of water consumption is, I think some of these standards would really be helpful for addressing that. So I'd be interested in, in having that research be, be part of that overall process, but um. Clearly, um, probably not feasible for the timeframe for, for the building codes that, that we need to meet. So. Um, with the clarifications that staff offered compared to what was in the report, um, I'd, I'd be very comfortable. Um, researching uh, option two to move forward with.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gibbons.
Uh, thank you. I appreciate the information in the staff report. Um, and I, I, I do think it makes a lot of sense to tie. Uh, I'm going to call major issues and umbrella issues brought up by councilwoman Landry and councilmember Lopez to the climate action plan. Uh, we really need to get our act going on that. I think it, it is on the, uh, the plan. So I think. Um, that's the right place and it can be comprehensive. I don't know if there's anything staff can do on water conservation between now and November. I would love to see that too. If there's anything that could, could realistically be incorporated. Um, into tweaking the building code. In that regard. The only, um, and I think the option two recommendation I'm supportive of. Uh, what I thought was particularly good is that um, the recommendation, um, as was discussed. Acknowledges that Campbell has, like every city, a definition of what includes or defines um. A new, new house. And what triggers it? Um, so for example, if somebody did an all new kitchen, um, it wouldn't trigger doing these upgrades. Uh, I'd be curious if any council member thought, um, any value to this because. Um, the twenty twenty-five code is already in the works. It takes three or four years in advance. And I believe one of the items in coming up are being discussed for twenty twenty-five, possibly twenty twenty-eight. Is um, that they're expecting state legislation to ban all electric appliances, period. You won't even be able to buy them. It's like you can't buy a toilet that flushes with two gallons anymore. You can only buy a toilet that flushes at one point two or less. Um, so um, there's a term that we, excuse me, is a term we use, which is called future proofing. And um, it's very expensive to go back in and retrofit. Opening walls and all of that. So one of the things we might consider doing if someone is remodeling a kitchen. Is just to, to um, recommend or require whatever that they put conduit in. So that if they use gas now for their appliance, that they have the ability to switch it to electric in the future. Same thing with all gas appliances that they still utilize. Uh, it's just. A minimum, minimum cost of conduit. Um, it might be good to have a pan oversized panel to be able to make the circuits and things like that. So I, I would encourage a council to consider having that as a, um, an additional thought. Uh, it's not mandatory. I just think it's, it's prudent because we do know that the changes are coming. So those are my thoughts.
Vice Mayor Bobby.
Great, thank you. Um, for the purpose of tonight, I would support option two. Um, and then I just want to make a general statement about um. Overall, the overarching goal is to move to all, all electric. Um, but I, I, I agree with councilwoman Landry to the extent that um, we, we seem to be putting all of our eggs in one basket with. Doing all electric and know the recent um. Experiences we've had with threats of, of blackouts and that thing and that type of thing um, is real. And it, I, I believe that will continue to be, to be that. But also, I also think we need to look at um, some of these unfunded mandates that are being. Voted on and, and residents are expected to comply with. And, you know, it's very costly to, to convert from gas to electric. And I think we need, there needs to be more um. Effort put into how, how, how that's going to be achieved. And it's, you don't just turn the switch on one day and everybody has to go electric. There's, there's impacts to, to the cost. Um, there's a process of permitting and inspections and how that's going to be handled. I, I have my own example of, of an upgrade that we're doing in the house. Um. We're, we're increasing the amps to two hundred and we're, and we're adding in a two hundred. Two hundred and twenty volt circuit. And it's taken eighteen months to go through that process, over fifty, five thousand dollars. Coordination between inspectors and there's just, it's, it's just a process that property owners really get frustrated with. And, and I'm just one example. So imagine that if everybody has to do that, there, there needs to be a better process in place. And there also needs to be consideration um, with some type of public financing, financing options for people that can't afford to do that. Because it's very costly for, for homeowners to have to. Not only do the wiring, but possibly detrenching and then all, all new appliances. So. I, I, I understand that's the goal, but we really should be looking to, in totality at the whole process and not just saying, oh, you need to go electric. That's my, my two cents on it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I, I, you know, I agree a lot with a lot of what the vice mayor said. I think that we are. We've got this big goal in mind, but we're missing a lot of things along the way. Uh, councilwoman Landry opened up with just the problems now of supporting the grid as it is. And my thing is a little disingenuous to say, well, if the power goes out, you're no better off with gas and electric. The problem is the power does go out today with gas and electric and it's only going to get worse. So I think we have to look. At how, how we upgrade those systems before we, we tax, we tax it more. I mean, yes, yes, there's. Both appliances, for example, go out, but I'm still told to do my washing and drying at night. And now I guess I've read, but you charge your car during the day. And, and in the, in the most amazing evidence that people don't trust the grid is. This city was contacted twice during the last heat wave and told, move off of your electric and use your, use your generators. Okay, diesel generators come, and that, and that message came from SBC. It's just an acknowledgement. I don't mean, I, I, I'm, I'm really saying it to that they're recognizing that we can't support what we have now. So to, to, to take these steps and move forward without looking at that, I think is um, is a problem. Vice Mayor said it, that, you know, I look at, I look at what's at my house, what's on my street. The reason I'm talking about residential now is I think that as we, as we expand these things. The goal is you, you, you'll go all commercial, you'll go new residential, then you'll go stricter into, into current residential. So we can easily switch from you can't buy new to you can't replace to you have planned obsolescence. I mean, that's the goal, obviously. Um, the problem is, and I know I'm speaking a lot of change in the future, but the vice mayor commented on it. Um, it's very, very expensive, the cost of the upgrades in my house and a lot of my neighbor's house, the cost of panel upgrades. Um, the inspections, the timeframe, um, and there's no help out there for it, right? And I think you mentioned that. I, Palo Alto actually has a program now, I think it's a really good one. They have their own utility so they can control that, but they're doing a, a heat pump, a, a heat pump water heater. Program where they're fronting it like half of the cost and throwing it back. So let's say a current heater costs you a water heater is like fifteen hundred and the electric is twenty-five. They're talking about charging fifteen hundred upfront and putting twenty dollars on your bill every month for five years at no interest. It's a great program. So basically you can get in for the exact cost of replacing the pump you have now. And pay twenty dollars more, but they estimate you'll save five or twenty dollars a month. So it basically is free, that the additional is free. We need to have those programs in advance to cover the upgrades and Los Gatos, they don't have been, they're just, just been in a meeting and talked with the vice mayor there. She looked into the same thing and I think actually it was the mayor's managers, I think Anthony, you were there, had a good conversation, we really did. And she said there, she has to, she has to underground to do it. It's like forty thousand dollars more for her to do it, can't afford it. So I think we have to address those things first. Um, and have some programs to help people because the alternative is that. I've done it twice my life. You change a water heater, you change a water heater when it stops working, which usually means it leaked. And if you're lucky, it leaked under the house. My last one leaked in the house. Um, the problem is if I then have to change it to electric and I can't support it, it's change it to electric, it's get a new panel, it's all that cost. I have to get a, find somebody to do it. I could be days or weeks without, without hot water. And if I can't afford it, I can't even do it. So this is where I, I think we have to address first before I'm willing to go further. Um, I would encourage, I know this is not on agenda, I would encourage SBC to do those programs. Because one of the things that came out of talking with, with Anthony at that meeting is I'm, I'm kind of stunned that there's such a big cash reserve there. That SBC could, could get a lot of this done in advance by offering some low interest or no interest upfront loans. Um, because I would be incented, others would be incented to put that panel in, to put in the appliances so you don't go to the point that it breaks. But um, I, I was moved to go back to the financials and um, you know, there's not a lot of infrastructure there. It's a, it's a buying and selling. Um, but there's over two hundred million dollars in, in buildup in, in profits there. I think it should be, I, I love to see SBC come back with programs to help. Residential homeowners prepare to change their panels, to buy new water heaters, to buy new house heaters. Do all of this on a long-term loan, kind of like it's done on solar. And you can move it, Palo Alto, I know, having just talked to one of the council members, their goal is a thousand, thousand units to start. But it's then to be able every year to replace just, just the water heaters that break every year, which is twelve hundred or fifteen hundred. Just keep funding that so that over a period of years, they replace them all. So that's, that's where I'd like to go. And until that, until I see that, I think that the problem is as you move this forward. We're going to, um, we're going to have unintended consequences of, of moving to where we are going to have people in current costs that can't afford. And, and can't upgrade their own buildings. So um, at this point, I mean, I'd love to see that come back. Um. At this point, I would probably stay with option three and just keep, I know we're minority here, but say, we're fine. I mean, the reality is for new developments. If in fact, it is cheaper to put in all electric, there isn't a developer that's not going to do that, because we always talk about their profit motive. They're going to do that, makes sense to do it. Um, and I don't think we've had any projects since we adopted our changes that went against that. I think they've all, they've all gone all electric as far as I know. So anyway, that's, that's my thinking. Um, I, I honestly believe that um. SBC could be the, the engine to, to put up funds to make this work and to make it work for people proactively. So that somebody like me, I would do it in advance. I have no reason to wait till something fails. Um, but that's a better use, I think, of the money than, than funding some of the other initiatives. And last thing, I'll just comment, I mean, just as an example. I, I, I said this two years ago when it happened. I know maybe it was a good intentions. I don't think we should accept money for this meeting to be paid a grant of ten thousand dollars. I'd rather that money go to a program similar to what I'm talking about or go back to ratepayers because the ratepayers are paying too much if there's that kind of cash. But I don't think we would accept that from anybody else. I don't mean minority, probably that too, I was two years ago. But I just don't think it's proper to um, to be taking grants to put stuff on the agenda. Anyway.
Could I offer some corrections to what you've been saying?
Let me, in a second.
I was first.
Were you Bush, Bush, oh, okay, go ahead. I didn't realize that.
Um, I would just say that Silicon Valley Clean Energy has been offering a um, heating, uh, heat pump, hot water rebate of seven thousand dollars. Um, it's gone down now, uh, but the program originally offered seven thousand dollars for, um, since two thousand seventeen.
Two residents. I'm listening.
Okay, so we have been doing that program for many, many years.
Two residents?
Yes.
I've never heard of that program.
Well, I, I mean, but there are Campbell residents that have taken advantage of it. Um, there are many residents that have. Uh, we have, there's a, a webpage called E-Hub. And E-Hub provides all kinds of grants and rebates and uh, cost savings for various appliances and programs. And I think um, Tony can perhaps speak more specifically, uh, but um. The board is in fact funding um, the EV stations for all new um, low income, below market rate housing. All of that is being funded um, by Silicon Valley Clean Energy. I think it's important to understand that um. Silicon Valley Clean Energy is just one of many CCAs. We've invested one point eight billion dollars in new power supply. And I've mentioned that we just recently did a ribbon cutting on a facility we shared with five other CCAs. That was. Sixteen hundred football fields. Of double-sided solar panels and one million batteries. That was being added to the grid sufficient to have, provide power for twenty-four thousand homes. Basically, all the homes in Campbell for twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So, so Silicon Valley Clean Energy is reinvesting all of its money. Into providing new clean power. They're using um, very innovative, first in the country uh, financial mechanisms. For doing what they call power prepay and send and selling bonds on the market and saving, I think, over ten million dollars on the term of that first loan. So there are many, many programs that are available and that are being done. Uh, one of the things that I think the organization has done particularly well. Is you, you were asking quite clearly about what's been going on now and the price of electricity and giving. Um, rebates to uh, property or to customers. And that is by far our goal. And that's why the um, organization is charging less than PG&E. We're captive to PG&E in many ways, but what's happening, we didn't have any brownouts this time. What happened was PG&E uh, equipment failure was not, it was not brownouts. Um, but the price of power on the market. Has gone through the roof because of the dramatic climate change driving these tremendous heat waves. It's not that um, people aren't doing the best they can do and, and companies like Silicon Valley aren't doing the best. But we, we have, it's a double-sided sword, you know, we're, we're trying to. Uh, fit into, to climate change and also provide um, clean power to help reduce the impact of, of climate change. But one of the pieces of information that I thought was particularly helpful that was given in a presentation last Thursday. Um, which I can send you the slides for. The incremental change to electrification is going to be very slow. They're talking one percent um, a year. So electrification isn't going to happen all at once. It isn't going to break the system all at once. So unfortunately, it's a big picture of many different facets. And I don't know if Tony could add anything more specific to programs that are being done. That um, there's, there's millions of dollars being spent to um. Facilitate.
Let's just hold that. I can go to staff and it should be distributed.
Well, you asked some pretty tough questions.
I would say that clearly there needs to be more outreach maybe, but I guess, I guess I disagree that um. With all these programs, there's massive cash balances, I mean, massive and, and um.
Do you know what our costs are?
I'm sorry?
You, you may not know what our costs are.
Well, I, I, I tell you, if two hundred, if two hundred and some million dollars is not a buffer, I mean, that's, that's another issue. So I'll leave it at that. Another, another day.
Are you done?
I was answering Mike's question.
Okay. Uh, I got a question, Tony. For you. You see these ads on TV for Generex? And it's basically a gigantic storage of gas that when the power goes out, you can use the, to generate the electricity. Are we banning those now?
No. I, well, I have to say, I'm not familiar with the commercials or the technology. But note tonight, the item is, before you is just to address new construction. And what kind of appliances are built in the new construction?
Right, but this is something, it, it basically is like, uh, if you're up in the mountains and you're all on propane, you have a tank. And so this Generex is a gigantic gas tank that then generates enough power or gas to then generate all the electricity in your house. So that's something to look at. It's outdoors, but if you're building a new house, you have to plum for that. So are, will we, in a new resident, allow the ability to then have this type of technology? That you basically have a gas tank next to your house to, when the power goes out?
Okay.
Good. Oh, we got someone coming else here.
Yeah, a Generex is really just a generator.
Please, that's a.
A Generex is really just a generator. So that big box is not a big. Gas tank. It's an engine that runs a generator. It's an engine that runs a generator and it can run off propane and it can run off natural gas. And it's kind of an emergency thing. So even though the grid might go down twice a year, you can fire up your Generex for a short period of time and actually have some, some electricity and it'll run your whole house.
Right, that's my point.
A battery, the Tesla batteries, that's another option. So you could have your house with two or three of these batteries that would offer just enough electricity to keep the refrigerator running and the lights on, probably not a lot of air conditioning, but you at least be able to get through the, the brownout.
I, I guess the point I made, you know, just like I brought up outdoor kitchens and gas and that kind of stuff. That technology is there. They're selling them and it is basically is gas tank that then is a motor that then generates electricity. So the question is, are we on a new residential job? Are we going to allow that? This is probably next year, but that's something to factor into this.
Sure. So without weighing into the details, the intent is not to go into emergency backup power sources with this ordinance. Is not to go into emergency backup power sources with this ordinance. So if that type of emergency backup power source is, what's before you does not affect that.
So it's still allowed in a new house?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I wanted to remind council that Silicon Valley Clean Energy has numerous grant programs. The city of Campbell has received over $200,000 in grants for the new police building. And by, actually tomorrow, there are two seminars for an additional $400 million in grants to communities. So Campbell is eligible to apply for both of those grant programs. So yes, we're, we're giving the money back to the community. And I'm going to say that the annual financial money that has to be legally committed, you know, to pay for the gas that's bought out, gas, sorry, electricity. The power generation is bought out in three, five, 10, 15, 20-year increments, sort of like bonds. So you have to have the money available to do that. And our cash reserves have done what's called a risk analysis. And if something goes haywire with the price of, of power generation or climate change, we have reserves for, I think it's 240 days so that we could override over an earthquake or hurricane or something like that. So it's a business as well. So I think that it's important to understand that it's protecting and providing what our citizens want and why it's there as, as a source to decarbonize the environment. And that was the commitment that all the cities have, have made.
Thank you. Rob, let me ask you, if you got, if there's, you want a direction today, there's no motion, but you want a direction.
That's correct. Yeah, I, I can read back what I heard. I mean, generally I've heard, I'm hearing council consensus on option two. I'm hearing council direction, option one, look at the climate action plan. And I have a few notes both on the, the rebates to look into Silicon Valley Clean Energy. You can look at and look a little harder at the water codes and then, and the Mauna Valley Water Code. We'll take a look at that if that's any possibility to unfold into this option two that comes back. Otherwise, we'd wait. Those are the notes we have.
I, I want to clarify my comments because I'm, I may impact the consensus. Wha- what I was saying was let's move ahead with option two, giving the feedback that I'm, I'm interested in hearing more about restaurants and just the latest information there. Additionally, as part of the climate action plan, I am interested in looking most particularly at the water guidelines. Not assuming that that can be part of, of this process just based off what, what I, I heard. I didn't think that was realistic. And that, that may or may not impact the, the consensus there. I, I am interested in looking at especially the water conservation options under tier one and tier two and option one. But I was not assuming that that would be ready before November.
Rob, while you're there, let me ask you, we have a comment, I don't think, on the zone code text amendment for parking and loading. Have we, do, do you have comments or do you have any information from us or direction from us? There's a second part of this, of this motion, which is initiate a zoning code text amendment for parking and loading to comply with state law amendments. And we haven't touched that.
Sorry, by oversight. So this is basically just to catch up to state law. There's a state law requirement that we have certain requirements or code to, if you put in a EV charging system, you can't. You don't have to put back parking spaces. This is as long as to do a zoning order to update that complies with state law. So that is part of the authorization tonight. I just authorized the staff to start to work on that zoning update.
Okay. And any other comments back on what you've heard or you have the, or you have the direction on both? And you can move forward with both of what you have?
I, I, we have, I, I do have clear direction to move forward.
Any comments anybody has on the, I don't think probably the parking and loading or that's just a kind of formality that we have to do, right? Yeah, super good. Okay.
I would just comment, I wish it was done as a separate item.
Agreed. It's a little confusing together. Okay, but you've got what you need and there's no motion required.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. So we'll go, there was no unfinished business. Last week, we skipped, last meeting, we skipped council committee report. So let's go back and do those quickly if we'd like. Councilwoman Landry, any reports?
Now I gotta think back a whole month instead of two weeks. I attended the opening of Wild Rose with the Chamber of Commerce last Thursday with Ann. And I'm meeting tomorrow, I had to reschedule a meeting with the library with Jennifer to go over the stakeholders' report and the stakeholder meeting. So that's tomorrow. And other than that, I haven't attended anything.
Okay, council member Lopez?
I'll, I'll be brief just because I'm, I'm not gonna be able to go back over however long. But just continue to be really engaged with the Bay Area Air District, which by the way, has some programs relevant to the last discussion. But with how, serving on the committee to find a new executive director for the organization.
Okay. Councilmember Gibbons?
Thank you. I spent a lot of time on Silicon Valley Clean Energy this past month. Then we just released the power content label, which shows it in compliance with 100%, 50%, 100% carbon-free and 50% renewable on the base rate. I attended a webinar on the establishing equitable energy rates, which was quite fascinating. I also attended a seminar on Reach Code webinar, which we talked about. It was put on by the joint, Silicon Valley Joint Venture, Silicon Valley Clean Energy and PCE. It was attended by more than 40 elected officials in San Mateo and Santa Clara County. I attended the Cal CCA Gala, which was celebrating Carol Mignan's authorization of the Cal, of the CC, California CCA legislation 10 years ago. And then, as we mentioned earlier, the decarbonization grants for 400 million are coming for orientation meetings tomorrow. And Silicon Valley Clean Energy was awarded a Green Power Leadership Award for Education from the Center for Resource Solutions, which has to do with its eHub, which provides community information for people who are converting and looking for information on products and EVs and solar systems. And also I wanted to take note that I attended a seminar that was talking about the optimizing building decarbonization with the infrastructure, sorry, Inflation Reduction Act. And there are substantive grants there. And Campbell is likely eligible for two different grants in the potentially hundreds of millions of dollars, which is very exciting. That information is being worked on and will most likely become effective in January. And I think, I don't know if the mayor mentioned, there's a lot of activities going on to the museum. And then we all attended the State of the City. Thank you very much, Mayor Resnikov. That was very well done.
Appreciate that.
And let's see. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I attended the annual meeting of the Friends of the Heritage Theater. I attended the ribbon, ribbon cutting at Wild Rose and also the State of the City for the city of Saratoga.
And let's see, I had meetings with West Valley Sanitation District, Savaka, which is animal control. Normal good numbers of 98, 99% return rate on dogs, cats and wildlife, mayors and managers meeting. I also to with councilmember, Councilwoman Landry and the Vice Mayor attended the Saratoga State of the City. I appreciate everybody that came to our State of the City. And actually about a month ago, we mentioned this last time, the Vice Mayor and I were out with a bunch of volunteers and helped build another fence at Edith Morley, replacing the ranch fence there. So I learned a little bit again about building fences. So I mean, that's everything among, that's right.
We forgot to mention, we went to Cal Cities because we didn't get to bring that up last two weeks ago.
Now you mentioned it.
And, and I, yeah, that reminded me, I was elected to serve on the Peninsula Division Board of Directors. So it was a great conference.
And I also attended at the Edith Morley Park, the police department put on an event. They brought out the new bear cat, our EOC and our new comfort dog.
Nice.
Madison, right? The new.
Morgan, Morgan.
Morgan, I keep calling him Madison.
As in John D?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for adding that. Now I'll adjourn those meeting to the next regularly scheduled council meeting, Tuesday, October 18th, 2022.